May 15th, special session, meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruen?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor, and I just want to make it-
We usually don't do pledge of legions for special meeting, but it's on the agenda.
It's up to, it's your discretion, Mayor.
Okay, we can skip that. So, yeah.
I just wanted to remind everyone that, and inform the public that Councilmember Wong is participating remotely for today's meeting, so I'll request a roll call vote for all votes, and I will rely on Councilmember Wong to notify me if any members of the public from that location would like to provide comments.
And yes, we're here in the public lobby of the Scherz in Stockholm.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so we don't have any postponements or orders of the day?
Correct, no postponements, Mayor.
And then the consent agenda calendar, we had a request to pull the item to get clarification on the BlackBerry Farm swimming pool activity on the day. So, I'm wondering, do we pull that item, or we just proceed with the recommendation and then get clarification on the swimming pool later?
If the item is pulled, I think you should pull the whole item. And you could, it normally would come at the end of the agenda, but you could reorder the agenda to have it come up front if you prefer.
I think I will just get that clarification later, so let's just proceed with the consent calendar. Yeah, okay, so now consent calendar, that, do we have a motion?
Mayor, would you like public comments?
Oh, right, and public comment on the consent calendar item.
And currently I have no requests for the item on the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, then we can have a motion on this.
Make a motion to move with the consent calendar.
Moore, second.
So, roll call vote.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Mohan voting no.
Okay. Next, item two, we have public hearing to the Government Code Section 3502.3 to receive a report on City of Cupertino vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. This is continued from the last meeting. I believe this is a new requirement from last year, from the new state by state bill.
Thank you, Mayor, that's correct, this is a requirement that we bring forward to our council ahead of the budget adoption, so for this item, I have Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, and Vanessa Guerra, our Human Resources Manager, to present this item, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, if I could ask our video department to put my screen up, oh, hold on, I might need to. My F8 button is not functioning, oh, there we go, thank you, video, I'm assuming they worked their magic back there, I, as Acting City Manager Tina did mention, this is a new reporting requirement from the state via AB 2561, and with that, I'll hand it over to our Human Resources Manager Vanessa Guerra to take you through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Vanessa Guerra, HR Manager for your city, and as Director Alfaro just previously mentioned, Assembly Bill 2561 went into effect on January the 1st, 2025, and the focus of this Assembly Bill is to ensure transparency and accountability in the recruitment process, and to provide us, Human Resources, your Human Resources Division, with an opportunity to update council and our community of our ability to recruit and attract talent to work for the great city of Cupertino. So I'll walk you through the slides that we have that talk about the Assembly Bill requirements, and in the bullets, we, on an annual basis, all public agencies are required to assess and address our vacancies, as well as to track our job vacancies and present this information of the vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts of our agency at least once each fiscal year. We need to identify any policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may present obstacles in the hiring process, and any additional obligations that we have to report if the vacancy rate is in excess of 20% per bargaining unit. In the City of Cupertino, we have two bargaining units and unrepresented and appointed employees. Our first bargaining unit is our Operating Engineers Local 3, and the Cupertino Employees Association IFPTE Local 21. Our OE3 represented classifications are in our maintenance positions, our field workers. The Cupertino Employees Association is our professional, paraprofessional, technical, and clerical positions with the city. And then the unrepresented employees or the appointed employees are where you'll see our confidential positions, our management, and appointed by City Council employees. The next graph will talk about the full-time, this excludes seasonal and part-time non-benefited staff, and how we are budgeted by FTE in the city, and you'll see that the majority of the FTEs are in our Public Works Department. This is a total of 202 FTEs, this excludes the five council members, so you may see in your budget that there's a number of 207, and this 202 is without the council members. And then we have a chart going back 10 fiscal years with what the new hires and promotions look like in our agency, and we had to look at a particular snapshot in time, so this is going to walk you through the information through April the 14th of this year. The vacancy rates by department, again, as of April the 14th, you'll see that by department we have the total FTEs that are allocated by department, what the vacant FTEs were or are as of April the 14th, and what the percentage of vacancy is for that department, and then the grand total as an agency, we are 10.4%. By bargaining unit, you'll see the breakdown of the budgeted FTEs, what's currently filled, and again, that's through April the 14th, and the vacancy rate by bargaining unit, and as you can see, we did not get to or exceed the 20% mark, so we don't have the additional reporting requirements under the Assembly Bill. I also wanted to provide some information about how we recruit here in the city, we have, at the very minimum, our Job Opportunities page, which is powered through our applicant tracking system NeoGov, we also use a system called CalOps, which is commonly used in the Northern California area for recruiting local government, special district, and other types of jobs to applicants, we work with departments extensively to reach out to their professional organizations, any listservs, websites, any blogs, any upcoming conferences they might be going to to advertise and promote our job vacancies through their professional networks. And with, that concludes my presentation, I'd like to recommend that you accept our vacancy report and conduct our public hearing, thank you very much.
Thank you, any question from council members? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, so, thank you for the presentation and for the graphics, I was wondering, there is a provision in the law that entitles the employee organization to make a presentation, and I just, I'm wondering if they were informed about that?
They were.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
We sent them an email as well as let them know during negotiation sessions.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a-
Yeah, Councilmember Mohan?
A quick question for staff, if we didn't have this requirement, and this is the first time we're having it, right?
That's right.
In what way was this information provided to us before this? I know it's in the budget, but not-
So, previously this had been provided, I want to say, at least for the last couple of years, because we had a council member request information on our vacancies, so we provided it as part of the proposed budget, I believe, at least last year, the last couple of years where we showed you all of the current positions and any vacancies that occurred. So, but before this, we didn't, as part of the budget, we didn't report on vacancies, but again, as part of a supplemental question was asked, and we did provide that information.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think I asked those questions. And thank you for providing those information, it was helpful. Any other questions? Okay, so then we would open for public hearing?
Yes, Mayor, I see one member of the public requesting to speak remotely. And that is all I see, so, Sam R., welcome, Sam.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers, I will keep my comments brief, I believe the City Managers Office over the recent two years has grown in size disproportionately compared to the other departments, the City Managers Office is not a community-facing critical function, other departments are community-facing critical functions, the City Managers Office is additional bloat to the services that the city offers. This is particularly concerning because in the last year, there was a policy that was passed for the user cost recovery fee, and the size of staff directly is proportional to the cost recovery that the residents now have to directly bear because of the policy that was passed under the previous council majority. I therefore ask you to be very, very frugal in how you treat these, and I ask you to close the unfilled positions in the City Managers Office, I ask you to prioritize the positions that are community-facing, particularly community development in the areas of planning and in the areas of building, speaking for myself here as a resident, and in the areas of parks and rec and public works. I do hope that you will look at this in the context of the budget, I understand this item is focused on the vacancy reporting, but I think the vacancies need to be closed if they are not being filled, the second thing I will add is that there are a number of cost cuts that have occurred at the federal government level, and there have been a number of layoffs, both at the federal, but also at the county level and state level, so there's a number of experienced government employees that are available, so we need to get more creative with our hiring practices, there is no reason these vacancies need to be so high at a time when there's unprecedented amount of federal layoffs, and I'm sure Councilmember Wong can attest to that with his experience in looking at the situation with the federal government. So let's please get creative in filling, planning, building in particular, and the permit situation is unacceptable, so let's get those closed and filled, and we need to shrink the City Managers Office, not just close these recs, but in the previous two years, we have had tremendous bloat in the budget and the staffing for the City Managers Office, and that needs to go down. At the same time, some departments have shifted, emergency services is now in parks and rec, so I ask you to look at these staffing heads in departments that don't naturally fit there, and economic development and emergency readiness, I don't know what we're getting, so please look at those as well, these costs are now directly borne by residents, and we cannot afford it, there was a 10% fee hike on residents that was proposed in the last council meeting, ranging from 10% to 75%, coming on the top of fee hikes last year, so please cut costs here, thank you.
Thank you, Sam, next we have Seema Linskog, welcome, Seema.
Hi there, yeah, I just wanted to mention regarding vacancies, I just want to remind the public again where we are at our seventh city manager in four years, and every time we cycle through city managers, we have a harder and harder time to attract talented, qualified employees, and from what I hear, this is another huge hit to the morale of the employees that are left, so, I mean, if we're trying to keep a high number of vacancies, I think this is exactly the right way to go about it, and we're doing an excellent job of making sure that nobody's ever going to want to work for Cupertino, anybody qualified at least, I also wanted to mention that we apparently now have two new Assistant City Attorneys that no one has, no one knew were coming, and I would love to see how much we're spending on legal and lobbying fees, while we're talking about cutting $100,000 here, $100,000 there, my understanding is we're well, well above that in terms of legal fees and the, just since the beginning of this year, and I'm really not sure what we're getting for it as a city, and we're spending our money on lawsuits and legal fees and lobbyists rather than, you know, working on maintaining our qualified staff and boosting their morale and making sure that we have filled the vacancies that we need to fill, thank you.
Thank you, Seema, and Mayor, I see no additional requests to speak for this item.
Okay, thank you, does the staff have any clarification you might wish to make?
Sorry, Mayor, clarification on what?
In term, in terms of unfilled vacancies, unfilled positions in City Managers Office.
The only update I can provide right now is that economic development is in City Managers Office, I will need to, since the information Vanessa provided is as of mid-April, I'll need to go back and I can get that information for you next week.
Okay, and then maybe a question about two Assistant City Attorneys?
Yeah, so Alshar and Winder is providing legal services through our contract as city attorney, and we have a team of lawyers across the state, and two of those lawyers are resident in the Bay Area, and they assist me in the city in terms of providing legal services to the city, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you, thank you for providing Attachment B, which shows when the positions became vacant, I was wondering, there is a column that has the status showing the recruitment when it was posted, and if we could have an informational item letting us know when the recruitment was posted, I'm specifically interested in some of the earlier vacant dates, like, there's one in 2022, and then there's, well, there's a couple in 2022, and then 2023 has some, so I was wondering when those recruitments were posted, if that could be arranged?
Sure, I made a note of that, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm wondering if it's possible to also provide whether a vacancy is due to retirement, if that information can be included in the table?
We should be able to add that information.
Yeah, and then in case we know there is an upcoming retirement, do we usually start recruiting before the vacancy occurring because we know the expected date?
We don't, we wait until we receive the resignation from the employee before recruiting for a variety of reasons, but we look for CalPERS paperwork and that, from the employee that they have initiated their retirement and their resignation before we start doing the hiring process.
So how much time do they need to notify the city before their last day?
Well, ideally, we'd like as much time as possible, oftentimes we don't get much time.
Is there a minimum they need to notify the city 30 days before?
There is no minimum.
So they can notify us tomorrow?
Yes.
Oh, okay, but then do people usually notify earlier as a courtesy?
Typically, most people do give us some sort of notice, yes.
Then we can maybe start recruiting earlier?
Right, when we get their notification of resignation and their acceptance from CalPERS that they've retired, then we start working with the department on filling their position.
Typically, how long does it take to fill a vacancy?
Typically, about 90 days from beginning to end, depending on a variety of factors, but that's the average.
Okay. Councilmember Mohan?
No questions.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, so I would like to direct members of the public, if they're curious about AB 2561, to go to the Ledge Info site, and if you click on the bill analysis, you can see who is supporting and opposing the bill, and hear their arguments for and against it, I just wanted to clarify that for, with regards to item three, obstacles in the City of Cupertino's policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may create challenges in the hiring process, were there any identified?
I didn't identify any, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to take this chance to clarify some miscommunicate information that has been passing around, the idea of seven city managers in four years, I think we keep repeating this kind of misinformation is what will be discouraging people from applying for Cupertino, I was sworn in as the City Council at the end of 2018, at the time, the city had an interim city manager and an interim city attorney, because the 2018 council had put the prior city attorney on leave in May, and then the city manager of eight years retired all of a sudden in July, the council had no announcement to the community, and then basically within six months, I had gone through four city managers, not of my, anything of my doing, because the interim at the time had to leave, the last day was 1st of January, so I had to get another interim, and then we have to get another city manager, so if you count these seven city manager, four of them was a result of a instability that I inherited from the 2018 council, and then every time we do have a city manager who wants to have a change of mind, then we do have to have an interim, and also, I, so I think we need the public to not put this fear mongering to the public, especially in 2022 election, there was a rumor about high staff turnover in the city government, but there, at the time, the city manager has not told, informed the City Council of any high staff turnover, because if there is any, the city manager, of course, should be taking actions, and then inform the council and devise any strategy, as it turns out, the staff turnover was at a higher level of the city, city staff level, and most of the people who left went to a higher position, because after COVID, there was quite a lot of movement because of retirement, so only one position, I understand, so I want to clarify, we need the public to please do not spread misinformation, so that the council can, and the city staff can focus on doing the work for the city, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, so I'm just going to read a real brief excerpt from the bill analysis, California's local governments are facing a vacancy crisis impacting these workers, their services they provide, and the economy, with a recent study from the UC Berkeley Labor Center, finding the vacancy rates are as high as 30% in several counties, so we saw our chart here, our vacancy rates were nowhere near that, about 10% or 11% were our highest ones, I want to make sure that that point is known, and if it's okay with the mayor, I would like to move the recommended action that we receive the informational report on the City of Cupertino vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts pursuant to Government Code Section 3502.3.
I second that.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now items three, per council direction, we'd like to review potential CIP projects to be defunded from the current approved list, this is continued from May 6th, so. We have staff report.
This is also an item that was continued, and I will have Chad Mosley, our Director of Public Works, and Susan Michaels, CIP Manager, present this item, thank you.
Good evening, council-
Madam Mayor, as a, just as a point of order and cleanliness, on the topic of the Bollinger Road corridor study, I will need to recuse, so if we could perhaps bifurcate that particular issue, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so we, but then we would hear the presentation together, and then it's only during the deliberation.
That's fine, I just wanted to raise the issue.
Thank you for that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works, as was mentioned, council had requested to look at some of our CIP projects to consider defunding, and this item before you tonight kind of calls out six of the, of the projects that council had indicated they were interested in discussing, Susan Michael, our CIP Manager, will go through our presentation, kind of present those projects and the benefits and the non-benefits, I guess, of defunding or keeping each of these projects in turn, take it away, Susan.
Thank you. So, good evening, City Council and members of the public, I'm Susan Michael, CIP Manager, and we're here at your request to review the possibility of defunding CIP projects, the action tonight is to review CIP projects to be potentially defunded, City Council can consider or motion to defund CIP projects, or reaffirm the current CIP project list. Wanted to note that we have 28 existing CIP projects, and one will be added with the approval of the fiscal year 2526 budget, of those projects, we polled the council members individually to confirm which projects each member would like to discuss defunding, and there were interests, there was interest in reviewing four transportation projects and two sustainability projects. The first project, I'm going to just go through the list, and then we can open up for discussion, so the first project to discuss or to mention is the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 Bike Way Phase 2A Design and Construction. So, the Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 Bike Way is the top priority from the 2016 Bicycle Transportation Plan, it's a Tier 1 priority from the 2018 Pedestrian Transportation Plan, and it's meant to improve vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian safety along one of Cupertino's busiest arteries, this has always been considered an important project in light of those transportation plans, Phase 2A includes design and construction of the separated bike way from, on Stevens Creek Boulevard from Wolf Road to Deansa, improvements include traffic signal modifications at Wolf Road and Deansa Boulevard to provide separate bicycle phasing, this project is a subsequent phase of a previous project, Phase 1, Phase 2 design was approved as part of fiscal year 2021 CIP, and Phase 2 construction, the whole Phase 2, not just 2A, 2A, 2B, was approved as- the whole Phase II, not just II, II, II B, was approved as a new project in the fiscal year 2122 CIP. Council approved the award of the General Contractor Contract in February of this year, and that scope is underway. Projected cost for this project will be 2.2 million. 1.5 million of external funding is secured that will offset that 2.2 million, resulting in a final cost of approximately $720,000. If the project were to be defunded presently, 2 million of the 2.35 million city funds allocated to the project could be returned to the Capital Reserve. If the project were to continue, we project to have 1.6 million dollars funding available at the end of the project for other uses, including possibly II B, if the council wishes, or to return it to the Capital Reserve. If the project is defunded, we will lose 807,000 of OABG funding. The 693,000 of SB1 funding can be re-appropriated. So Phase II B, Stevens Creek Boulevard Class IV Bike Way Phase II B Construction. Phase II B includes construction of the bike way along Stevens Creek Boulevard from Deansa to Highway 85. Phase II B design is 95% complete. Prior to commencing with the bidding and construction of the project, the city intends to search for external funding sources and will return to council with, for funding approval for that project at that time. So defunding this project has no fiscal impact, because presently, no funds are allocated to this phase. So the third project is Stevens Creek Boulevard Class IV Bike Way, the Banley Drive Signal Upgrade. So this is separate, because we received developer-in-lu funds back in, I want to say 2017, 2018. So we keep, we have to keep the funding math separate. So this upgrades to this traffic signal at Banley and Stevens Creek will include new conduit wiring, traffic signal boxes, new signal heads, a split-phase signal operation for vehicles entering onto Stevens Creek Boulevard, and all to enhance safety and overall signal operation efficiency. So Phase II A and B were jointly funded in design. The Phase II B and Banley are combined in construction to increase efficiency. However, yeah, as I said, funding is noted separately here, just because of the in-lu fees that we have to track. The design for II B, as well as the Banley intersection, is 95% complete. So defunding this project would result in 116,550 of city funds to be reallocated. The $25,000 approximately of developer-in-lu funds would be addressed by the city attorney at a future date. Okay. The Bolinger Road Corridor Study. So for this project, the city intends to undertake a multifaceted approach to further inform the Bolinger Road Corridor Safety Study, which was, I think, 2019, the recommendations from that study, previous study. Traffic modeling will perform micro simulation analysis of the proposed alternatives. This will evaluate potential impacts such as congestion or traffic diversion, identifying necessary mitigation measures. The city will engage a consultant to design and execute a robust stakeholder engagement process, including interviews, surveys, and workshops, culminating in a report that combines the findings and communicates outcomes. Lastly, a traffic enforcement initiative guided by the Safe System Approach will fund two traffic enforcement agents for a one-year pilot, enhancing safety as the project develops. The city is coordinating with the grant agency to finalize and execute the grant agreement. So once finalized, the city will procure a consultant team to move forward with analysis and outreach. Defunding the project would result in 106,400 of city funds being reallocated, and the grant funding would be lost. Only two more. The photovoltaic systems design and installation project, this PV project contracts, the contracts for the design-build entity and construction management were approved in February, and the design phase is underway. This project is anticipated to save 13.4 million in utility costs in the next thirty years. With federal rebates projected, nine years is the payback period, and without the federal rebates, the payback period is thirteen years. If these same projects were undertaken in the NIM 3 context, rather than NIM 2, the projected savings in lifecycle utility costs are 9.2 million, so it's about 4.2 million less. So defunding the project would allow six point, approximately 6.2 million to be returned to the Capital Reserve. And the last project is the Silicon Valley Hopper EV Parking. So this project will provide electric vehicle charging stations for our Silicon Valley Hopper EV fleet, that's formerly the Via Shuttle. The Hopper requires dedicated EVCS, which is Electric Vehicle Charging Stations, for operational efficiency. The project budget includes design and construction. The budget is not adequate for additional electrical service upgrades, if required. Search for external funding is ongoing, and presently, the EV fleet is parked and charged at Deansa College. The City of Santa Clara is also exploring the option of providing overnight charging at, within Santa Clara. They've been working with their utility provider for a year, but the outcome is still uncertain. So this, defunding this project will allow approximately 320,000 to be returned to the general fund. Oh, sorry, this one would go, yes, to the general fund, not the Capital Reserve. So once again, the action tonight is to review the CIP projects, as mentioned, for defunding, and the city council can motion or consider to defund CIP projects or reaffirm the current CIP program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I need to take a bio break. So let's take a five minutes break. Okay, sorry about that. Any question from the council? No? So if not, then we would go to public comment. How many do we have?
Yes, Mayor, I currently have five requests to speak from in Community Hall. I see three requests to speak virtually, so that would take us to 24 minutes.
Okay. So we, we don't need to cut time, right? I know we need to have the budget to get through. Okay, so let's hear them.
Okay, so we have Herve Marcy, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Herve.
Mayor Chow, and esteemed council members, my name is Herve Marcy. I serve on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission of the City of Cupertino, but today I speak solely for myself. I must express a serious concern. Recent decisions by council show troubling inconsistency. Last July, the council unanimously voted, adopted, sorry, Division Zero Plan, a commitment to identify and fix the most dangerous corridors in Cupertino, where severe injuries and fatal collisions are most common. The plan is clear: prioritize infrastructure that saves lives. Stevens Creek Boulevard and Bolinger Road were specifically identified as high-risk areas. And let's begin with Stevens Creek Boulevard. At our recent Bicycle Pedestrian Commission meeting, even individuals not typically supportive of protected bike lanes praised Cupertino's infrastructure, saying it far outshines Santa Clara and San Jose's. But the reason why our city's infrastructure passed with, I quote, "flying colors," the reason why it is superior to those in Santa Clara and San Jose is exactly thanks to these protected bike lanes, thanks to these intersections that require car drivers to pay attention to their surroundings, to pedestrians, to children, and to seniors. Proposal to defund the Stevens Creek Boulevard Protected Bike Lane Project are a direct betrayal of Division Zero Plan. That plan explicitly calls for protected bike lanes and safer intersections. To abandon this is to accept preventable injuries and fatalities. And let's talk about Bolinger Road. It is a frightening corridor for pedestrians, cyclists, and even drivers. The question is not if a fatality will occur, but when. We hear calls for data-driven projects, yet without studies, how can we gather data? Ignoring this is not caution, it's negligence. Some might prefer to play the ostrich game, sticking their head in the sand until a tragedy forces action. But is that the leadership our residents expect from you? We are witnessing a shift. In 1983, 46% of 16-years-old in America had a driver's license. By 2018, that dropped to 25. Our young people are choosing alternative transportation, electric bikes, scooters, and more. They are not yet voters, but they are the future. This council has a choice: build a safer Cupertino, or abandon it to chance. You can align with Vision Zero, protect lives, and invest in a sustainable future, or you can allow indecision to put residents at risk. I urge you, let's start proceed with the Stevens Creek Protected Bike Lines and the Bolinger Road Study. This is about saving lives, not just making plans. Thank you.
Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Seema Linskog. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am here to urge you to continue funding the CIP projects. Why is the council even considering being penny wise and pound foolish? The community has been deeply engaged in the approval of these projects spanning a number of years. So why is this council suddenly reversing course? The projects are under progress. So canceling them means cancellation penalties. In addition, these projects involve outside funding, so defunding them would be fiscally irresponsible. Why, why would funding agencies consider working with such an arbitrary jurisdiction? Why would contractors spend money to put together a bid that can be reversed at the whim of a council? Now, with regard to this specific projects, you know, transportation projects have been top priority for a number of years. So why are we suddenly reversing? The Bolinger Road is a study. It is not an actual action item that would, the city would undertake. But you have to have information, data, in order to make decisions. And we know that that is a very dangerous street. With regard to the photovoltaic project, you know, Cupertino prides itself on being progressive and at the leading edge. So why are we reversing ourselves? You know, this will save money for the city in the long run. And then, with the Hopper, I find it very ironic that last week, Deansa College was the devil incarnate, and yet, we're depending on it right now to do our EV parking, charging. This is an area that is not utilized, and so why can't we use it overnight for charging? I mean, this city and its parking policies need a lot of work. We need to be able to do time slicing in terms of use of our parking areas. Please, don't be penny wise and pound foolish. These are all worthy projects, which would build an infrastructure that would improve our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Seema, followed by Evan Lajewski. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin. In terms of the, let's start out with the Banley traffic signal. If Public Works can get money from a developer at any way, especially nowadays, let's leave that money there to upgrade a signal. This is the way that Public Works always has been able to get money to improve traffic signals, crosswalks, et cetera. Developers have to pay their fair share, and if they're impacting travel along corridors, they need to be open about things that the city can do to make sure that their development does not impede traffic. And I think that upgrading the Banley traffic signal is something we need to do. In terms of the bicycle improvements along Deansa Boulevard, I'm sorry, Stevens Creek Boulevard, the eastern section of the city was kind of the guinea pig for the installation of these traffic corridors like two years ago. You know, we were the ones that had to, like, deal with them. So now they're being rolled out to the western side. Okay, yeah, fair's fair. We had to deal with them. But I will tell you, I am concerned about issues with entrance and exit into retail. I personally, it's my choice, I don't go into shopping centers that have the safety bollards, et cetera, in front of them. I think that they are good for helping people on bicycles, but I find them onerous in terms of trying to get in and out of traffic. And I just drive down the center lane of Stevens Creek Boulevard now, because I never know what I'm going to encounter. You, my husband is extremely upset about potential having to back up traffic where you can't turn right on a red light. Every time we come down to Wolf Road, he starts up about it. I won't go into that. The Bolinger Road Study, I've been to all the meetings. We have to remember, this is not just Cupertino, it's City of San Jose. We're also budding up against Lawrence Expressway. My mother-in-law lives along Bolinger, right near Tantow. You cannot reduce one late on that road. It is dangerous. You know, you can't, you have major emergency vehicles going up and down to the hospital. We just can't do that. We need to be smart about this. And I'll tell you, because of SB 79, I'm really jittery about what Weiner's going to do to us. Thank you.
Next, we have, well, it looks like Seema Linskog is now joining the attendees remotely, so I will call on you shortly when we get to that queue. Next, we have Evan Lajewski. Welcome, Evan.
Hello, I'm Evan Lajewski. I'm a resident here, and I generally commute daily to work and elsewhere in the city by bicycle. So I just wanted to express my support for programs that help with safety and with any bicycle infrastructure, as well as pedestrian infrastructure. Anything that we can do to help give people a better choice for alternative transportation, for green, sustainable lifestyle as well, I think we should encourage as a city. And I would, in addition to that, from a safety standpoint, as has been mentioned earlier, we have Vision Zero. I think if we can try and make sure we fund studies and projects that are for that, that we should try and do so. Going home, I regularly now, I recently switched locations, and so now I regularly bike home on Stevens Creek Boulevard. While doing so, as soon as I pass Wolf, the bike, the bollards disappear, and I try and get off Stevens Creek as quickly as possible. The reason being, I really don't want to be on that road without the extra safety there. So I will turn off, I will go the side routes, I'll do whatever I can at that point to try and maintain my safety. And so if we can do things to improve that, so that there are fewer accidents and fewer collisions. collisions with cars and bicycles or pedestrians. Earlier, about a month or two ago, I did run into an accident. I had an accident on that part of the bike trail, or, sorry, bike lane. Fortunately, recovered now, but it could have been worse. So thank you for your time. I'll leave it to that.
Thank you, Evan. And now we will, we will move to those members of the public who have requested to speak virtually. We have San R., followed by Betsy Magus, followed by Seema Linskog. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I would like to urge you to reclaim seven million in city funds by defunding the PV/EV project, including the Via Hopper. This item was heard at council, I believe, on December 3rd. On December 3rd, the election results were no. And yet, the item was heard by the previous council. At that time, I urged the previous council to say, please wait. You do not have Councilmember-elect Wong on the dais. You're not the majority anymore, and it is not correct to make decisions of a seven million magnitude and size when the council composition is changing and the majority is changing. What was the rush to vote on seven million dollars a few days before a new council was inaugurated? I would actually urge the current council to consider this as one of the items to investigate the now-under-investigation city manager. Who put this item on the agenda to rush this through for seven million dollars, not a small spend, at a time when council was changing? Was it the city manager? Was it supporters of the prior council majority? Who made the decision? I urge you to defund this entirely, but in particular, you have received an unprecedented number of mails repeatedly from the SportsCenter users, who are a large organized group of over sixteen hundred voters. And even Councilmember Wei, Ang Wei, recognized the community strength of the CSC and showed her support. And I will be grateful to her forever for saving CSC. I urge you to defund the CSC PV and EV today. You have probably rarely received that much input, as you do today. And I would also urge you on the bike lanes, safety is something that is frequently touted. Nobody has an answer for when you put concrete in the blocks. What happens if you have regular bikes, and e-bikes, and e-scooters all vying for a small, narrow space with the concrete in the block on one side and a sidewalk on the other? Is it really safer? Is it safer for the regular biker if somebody is coming behind them at a rapid speed? And if they need to cut into the traffic, is it safer for the e-biker and the e-scooter? The reality is, the plans from 2016 did not assume there were e-bikes and e-scooters competing for the same space. Concrete in the blocks are from the stone ages. It is time to leave the stone ages. Let's invest in flexible bike lanes that are painted green like every other city around us. No city puts concrete in the blocks. Let's use flexible bike lanes that allow for e-bikes and regular bikes to compete in a safe way and use the space and share the space. And likewise, for the right turns, let's use modern technology like pedestrian sensors and adaptive lights, and stop putting concrete everywhere. Concrete is stone ages. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Betsy Magus, followed by Seema Linskog, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Betsy.
Thank you. Betsy Magus, I'm a resident of the City of Santa Clara. I'm a member of the VTA Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, speaking tonight for myself. Happy Bike-to-Work Day! My husband and I commuted by bike twenty miles today for transportation while our car never left home. Where the bicycle network is complete, comfortable, and connected, you get more people biking, and we need more people biking. We have a climate emergency, and some forty percent of our local and state greenhouse gases still come from people driving, mostly cars, mostly alone. Cupertino until now has really led the way for what a great bike network could look like here, and I'm disappointed that there's an effort on the table to backtrack on that progress and on safety. I want to live and bike in Santa Clara and into Cupertino, and point to Cupertino when I ask our council and staff to do better in Santa Clara. Defunding these projects is a bad decision for safety, and it's a bad financial decision. To the previous speaker's point, I share bike lanes. I have an acoustic bike, just a pedal bike. I share bike lanes with e-bikes. It's not a problem. The concrete is a better solution. Plastic posts are vertical paint, and paint is not protection. So defunding these projects is a bad decision for safety, and it's a bad financial decision. Stevens Creek Boulevard is a priority across county bicycle corridor in VTA's 2018 Bicycle Plan Update, and it's a part of MTC's Active Transportation Network. If you reject the grants that have already been awarded for these streets, please expect much more scrutiny getting any kind of county or regional funding, especially anything competitive. Your streets and the people who use them do not end at your city line. I live and work in the City of Santa Clara, and I bike on Stevens Creek to get to Cupertino. I bike on Bolinger because they're direct connections to places I need to go. Please consider, please continue funding the CIP project. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Next, we have Seema Linskog, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Seema.
Hi, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. I'm a planning commissioner, but I'm speaking today as a resident. On February 4th, the council voted three-two to keep the Stevens Creek project moving forward. That decision should be respected. Allowing a council member to bring the same item back for a vote just because they didn't like the outcome of the first vote would make every council vote ineffective and subject to being challenged over and over and over again. That is a dangerous precedent to be setting, and I urge you to think carefully about whether you want to allow this. A few council members and members of the public have stated several times in the past few weeks that cyclists are a minority in Cupertino, implying that therefore their needs matter less than those of car drivers who are the majority of residents. So I'd like to address that. Most Cupertino residents can identify as being a member of a minority group, be it by age, ethnicity, disability, culture, or otherwise. If we don't protect the cycling minority simply because they are not the majority, are we gonna stop there? Or will we apply the same logic to not protecting our disabled residents, our LGBTQ residents, our seniors, simply because they're not the majority? Your role as a council member is to care about the safety of all residents, whether they are a minority or a majority. And the needs of cyclists and drivers are very unequal. Cyclists are a very vulnerable minority, many of whom are children, by the way, and they have a much higher risk of accidents and deaths than the average resident, and they need to be protected. Drivers, on the other hand, have a very different need. Their need is to not be inconvenienced by losing a few seconds of driving time and having to maybe pay a little bit more attention and slow down when they're driving. Those needs are very unequal, and they're not the same. I also want to address another point. There's a lot of misinformation and fear-mongering that funding the Bolinger Road Corridor Study will lead to a lane reduction. That is simply not the case. The study will look at how to make the corridor safer for pedestrians and cyclists by proposing specific projects, which then need to be approved and funded by the council before they can proceed. So there's many, many steps before any changes are actually implemented, and the council has full control over every one of those steps. And there are many solutions that can be implemented to make the corridor safer that don't include lane reduction. So we need to greenlight the study to find out what these options are and which ones will work best for us. So please let it proceed. And finally, I want to address the comments that one of the previous speakers made. With all due respect, he doesn't bike, and he clearly has zero knowledge of the data on bike safety. There is a wealth of data showing that concrete barriers actually do save lives. They're not an antiquated thing. They are very good. They work, even with multiple cyclists or, you know, e-bikes or not. And I would really encourage him to educate himself. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Seema. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, council members and Acting City Manager Kapoor. I'm Jennifer Sharon. I urge you today not to defund the Stevens Creek Phase Two Bike Lanes and the Bolinger Road Study listed in Agenda Item 3. Doing so would negatively affect the safety of our residents and the ability of the city to reach future grants. Frankly, it also opposes the values that we hold as a Cupertino community to care about the safety of all residents. The Stevens Creek Bike Lanes have already had a vote to move forward. We should not be revisiting this, especially it is the most dangerous corridor in the city, with a high number of fatalities and serious injuries. If you hate biking people, a lot of the injuries have been pedestrians. They're our friends, our neighbors, our family. You know, the quote "flexible" unquote bike lanes that our planning commission chair spoke of earlier are just paint. Just paint. There are numerous studies that show that paint doesn't save anyone. It's easily driven over. We've already had tragedies of students dying in our city. We've had tragedies of seniors dying in our city, on our streets. No one wants more of these. It's time to make it safer for our most vulnerable residents, if not everyone else, before another tragedy happens. Bolinger Road has also had fifty-two serious injuries and two deaths in just a five-year period. The road only has pedestrian crossings and intersections a half mile apart, encouraging unsafe crossings. And even those intersections have seen many accidents. Not even being willing to look at what could be done out of a fear of what the study could say does our residents a disservice. We are tired of our family, friends, and neighbors being hurt or killed on this roadway. If the safety is enough of an incentive to not defund these projects, consider the city's future financial welfare. Not only will Cupertino lose millions of dollars in grant funding, but the amount saved is not very much, especially when considering the penalties for canceling contracts. On top of that, we're unlikely to get grant funding from these organizations again, or fine contractors. If we start canceling contracts and start denying things we actually asked for, like these grants, we're not in such severe financial straits as we were prior to the sales tax settlement. We're actually doing okay, and we can see that from how much we're spending in billable hours for legal fees, for our city attorney, as well as the two associates that are now on board as well. If we're pretending this is a financial decision, it makes much more sense to spend our city's tax dollars on long-term improvements to increase safety for our residents and instead cut back on other things, like expensive and unnecessary legal fees. Today, think of all residents. Keeping these items on the CIP does that. Thank you for your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, our final speaker is Luis Sedadi. Luis, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for that. So, dear mayor, vice mayor, and council members, please do not defund the Stevens Creek Corridor Protected Bike Lanes Project and the Bolinger Road Corridor Study. The city council already discussed this item and voted three to two to keep the funds the city was granted on February 4th, 2025. Now, time and money is being wasted to further discuss this again, even after the three to two vote, because one councilman, Ray Wang, brought this back again because he didn't like the two-four-twenty-five vote. This is not the way to manage nor direct a city. The council should not keep debating the same item over different meetings until a particular councilman receives the votes he wants. This sets a horrible precedent where other council members can re-agendize an issue already previously discussed and voted on in council. Defunding is also completely fiscally irresponsible. It would cause Cupertino to lose a million, a million dollars in grant money. Cupertino is already in financial difficulty without the city council refusing a million dollars in grant money. Besides financial penalties, it would make getting future grants and contracts much more difficult and uncertain. Speaking of financial responsibility, Cupertino is now spending twice as much in billable hours for legal fees for our new city attorney, and, on top of that, two additional associates for Cupertino work also. But besides the money, protected bike lanes have been found to protect lives. Stevens Creek Boulevard's danger has been well documented. You cannot morally defund the Stevens Creek Protected Bike Lane Project. You need to quickly vote to keep the funding for Stevens Creek Protected Bike Lane for safety, good governance, fiscal responsibility, and efficiency. The funds for Bolinger Road also need to be kept. The grant money for the study, there is ample evidence for the dangers. We need a detailed study to identify specific problems and solutions on Bolinger Road. It's fear-mongering to claim that the study is about lane reduction. We are talking about problems and finding solutions. We need to use the funds we were given for that study.
Thank you, Luis. That is your time. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. So now we will separate discussion between Bolinger and, do we do the Bolinger first? Why don't we talk about Bolinger first? Yeah?
All right. With that, then, mayor, I will state for the record that on account of previous advice of the city attorney, in light of the fact that I have a financial interest in a property located at 6445 to 6447 Bolinger Road, and the possibility that the Bolinger Road, the Bolinger Road Safety Study would impact the value of that property, I will be recusing myself from this portion of the discussion.
Okay, so even for a study?
I think if the councilman is actively identifying a potential conflict for himself, that we should honor that, it should be fine.
Okay. Okay. So for the Bolinger, I, I think we already have conducted a study like one or two years ago, right? And then it resulted, yeah?
Mayor, I'm very sorry to interrupt. There was a slight miscommunication about one of the speakers wishing to provide comment on this item. There were two SEMAs, and so when I announced that one was actually remote, there was actually another SEMA in community hall that did get skipped over.
Okay.
So is it possible to allow?
Yeah.
Three minutes?
So do we need the councilman before to be back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Seema.
Yeah, hi.
Hello, mayor and respected council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Seema Swamy, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, speaking today on behalf of myself. Roads in Cupertino really are a shared entity for all of us, and I have utmost respect because I also am a huge pedestrian, and so a pedestrian tends to have a little bit more danger than even a biker does. So with a lot of empathy for the bikers and pedestrians, one of which I belong to, that particular community, I must say that I am also a driver. And what I see as a researcher on the streets is that this shared entity that we have is really being used in a way where there are a lot more cars on the street than there are pedestrians and bikers. And so with due respect, there are lanes where we should have the streets where there are cornered-off spaces for the pedestrians, which we do have, the sidewalks and the bike lanes. But to take away real estate, prime real estate, from streets such as Stevens Creek and Deansa Boulevard, in my opinion... and Deansa Boulevard, in my opinion, is going to do a huge disservice to the citizens of Cupertino, as it is the amount of time that it takes for us to commute during prime peak hours. There is such a bottleneck over there. So it's really a question of how do we intelligently look at the entire situation and then make sure that we are looking at this in a way where we are addressing the needs of everybody. Are there accidents? Absolutely. There are actually more number of people that die from car accidents than anything else in the United States, right? My sympathies with anyone who dies while walking, and I think I'll be one of the prime people because I walk at least four to five miles a day, bikers who actually bike, and also the car folks or people who drive. So let's take an intelligent perspective, and I respect the council members who are actually thinking about it in a holistic manner. Thank you.
Thank you, SEMA. And Mayor, that completes the public comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So first, the Bolinger, we did a study. It's not like we haven't done a study. So this is, and that study resulted in two recommendations. Alternative A for road diet, which would reduce one travel lane, and then alternative B is to maintain the existing lane configuration. So I don't think it's fear mongering to say the study that we are conducting now is, will provide us data to decide between A and B, right? So it's not fear mongering to say this study will not, one possibility would be a lane reduction.
The original conceptual plan did have two options, A and B. At this point in time, we don't have enough data to know whether option A, like you said, the reduction of the lanes, is even feasible. So staff was proposing a traffic study to verify existing traffic patterns and traffic counts, to verify what options are available, and then within those options, that data would help to inform further decisions.
So if the council, I think in the prior study, usually it will propose alternative A, B, C, D, and recommend maybe A, but the council might take C. So in this case, if the council bring this study back to the council and say, we maybe want to just adopt alternative B, does that mean we don't need to spend $100,000 for this additional study? We can just look at how to reconfigure the current configuration to improve safety for pedestrian bikes and cars.
I mean, that's quite possible. I do believe that the traffic data that would come from this study would be helpful in informing further decisions, even if we chose option B. Additionally, the grant funding that we got for this also includes additional traffic enforcement from the sheriff's office that was part of the grant fund.
So if we just decide to proceed with alternative B, could we use the same grant funding to apply to any safety measure under alternative B? We can still do that, right?
Yeah, the grant funding is for traffic studies and analysis, and we would do the traffic study analysis for B as well. I mean, that data that we would get from this analysis would inform further decisions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, may I add something?
Councilmember Wang and then Vice Mayor.
So. A quick question to Chad is, so we can still have the traffic safety without having to do the study, is that correct, having the sheriffs out there?
We can, you know, proceed with potentially an alternative without doing the analysis, but the analysis, you know, we're very data-driven when it comes to our projects, and so we want to ensure that we have the data to make those informed decisions, which is one reason that this traffic analysis was put forward.
Okay, thank you. I think my main comment really is, as a cyclist, pedestrian, driver, and resident, we all want safe and efficient thoroughfares, but our challenge really is our main arteries. We want them to move fast and safe and efficient, and we want to cater to our drivers, but we also want our neighborhood streets to be safe for children and at-risk constituents. Stevens Creek Boulevard and Bolinger are very dangerous corridors in general for bikers and pedestrians. We all know that. Forcing more bikers onto these corridors and on these roads is exactly what we should not be doing in an area which is already dangerous. We all agree, it's dangerous. Why add more variables to make it worse? We should also have slower speeds in the neighborhoods and better bike lanes in the residential areas, which we're doing, and that's where really some of this money needs to be reallocated. We've seen how bike lanes have unnecessary added hours to commute times for the average residents in major metro areas such as New York City, London, San Francisco, even in San Jose. So we've seen the chaos on McCullen. So we also took out a lane on Deansa, and we felt the impact. So the implementation of, you know, a Bolinger study to, you know, have more data to give more opportunities to add a bike lane is precisely what we're trying to work around. I mean, the implementation of even the bike lanes in the later discussion is really part of the challenge, like right turn lanes are taken away, traffic is added. So we don't want to continue this in this, from what we're hearing. I mean, we are a suburban environment. Right now, we have over-indexed for bikers instead of drivers, which is what 90% of our commute times are. And cities like San Mateo are also rethinking where bike lanes should go. The problem starts with the Vision Zero Plan. It has to be reexamined as this input did not fully account for drivers, which are the majority of the use cases. We over-index for bikers. I'm a biker, but I also am a commuter, as SEMA Swami was saying. The reason we have a shifting priorities here is because the council ran on curtailing the encroachments bikers have inconvenienced drivers with. This is happening because residents want to achieve balance, and we are now restoring this balance. The public has spoken to nip this in the bud in the last election. It's not that we don't want safety or data-driven studies, it's just that's not the right place for that. And so I prefer that these investments go into safety projects for areas not on Stevens Creek or Bolinger and these neighborhoods. And more importantly, it's not just about the money, it's about stopping a bad policy. All these studies do is just enrich more and more of the consultants at our taxpayer expense. So that's just my comment.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So earlier, I had made an email request to find the average daily traffic and for some of the road segments in Cupertino, and the only recent one was on Deansa Boulevard. And it seemed like the other studies were from around 2017. So I would like us to have that information, not just Bolinger, but also Stevens Creek Boulevard, Homestead. I'd like to know about Lawrence because we're making decisions about some of these roadways, which we just don't have any data for. And I would like to have that as we move forward, looking at other potential projects on Stevens Creek Boulevard.
On Bolinger, no.
Correct. So I wouldn't personally want us to do a separate study on Bolinger. I'd like to have a more comprehensive review. When I look at our housing element, the environmental assessment is not showing me these segments. I was able to see them before. So I am not in support of continuing on with the Bolinger study. I would like a study, but not specifically on that particular segment. And I do agree with the members of the public regarding some of the other issues. So yes, biking does help with greenhouse gases. We do want to encourage it, but for this particular roadway at this time, I'm not willing to continue on with this type of a study. I'd like something more comprehensive.
Councilmember.
Point of inquiry. If we wanted to fund other data-driven studies, it's not in this process, but where do we suggest that? Is that in the capital? Do we do that in future capital investment projects or CIP programs? Is that where that would happen, just to the city manager, acting city manager?
And I can respond to that. I mean, that could be, yeah, that could be a city work program item if council wants to direct us to it. That being said, I do think that we are getting to the point where it'd be good to update some of that data we have in the past, try to update about every seven years. We're probably pushing eight or nine now. I know a lot of the reasons that David hasn't done this earlier is because, you know, we're still kind of figuring out the whole work from home, work in the office thing. I think we're starting to kind of level that out and find out what the new norm is, so that could be something that we could look at and maybe try and do in the next year or two.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a question for Director Mosley. This traffic study is for the intent of collecting data, the number of incidents, the number of accidents, the number of potential fatalities and so on, right? It is just a study. It is not, it is not a precursor to changing the pattern of the Bolinger corridor. Am I right?
That is correct. It's really just to collect the data that we are discussing and to help inform any future decisions that we may decide to move on that corridor, if any.
Okay. And the funding for this comes from where?
80% of it comes from a federal grant. The other 20% comes from the city's, I believe, is it the general fund or is it the capital?
Yeah, I think 20% is from the general.
Yeah. One of the things of concern is, you know, with the federal grant, there has been a little bit of concern that that may not come through for this. We are working diligently with, I believe it's MTC, to verify whether this grant is going to come through. We've been working on a grant agreement for about two years since the last time we brought that. We still don't have the grant agreement in place. There is a little bit of uncertainty there whether that grant's going to come through, just as an FYI, which is one reason we haven't started the work yet, is because we're waiting for the grant agreement to get executed first.
And how does that work? Do we have to complete the project and then claim reimbursement, or do they give the money upfront?
After the grant agreement's in place, we would typically complete the project and then request reimbursement.
So if the project is complete, say in the next six months, there is no guarantee that we will get reimbursement within the next six months or at the end of the six months?
At this point in time, if we have a grant agreement, we should be guaranteed the money, but we don't have that agreement in place yet. As soon as, and this is one reason we haven't started the work, we don't want to utilize any city funds until we know we're going to get paid back. So as soon as we get the grant agreement, we could move forward with the data collection. But at this point in time, since that grant agreement has not gone through, we haven't spent a dime on this project yet.
And are you waiting for council approval today to proceed on the grant agreement?
We're working with, I believe it's MTC, on the grant agreement. We just haven't been able to get it fully executed by MTC yet.
So what does that mean?
So there is an agreement that's necessary. We want to make sure that we are guaranteed that money if we proceed with the project, and that's what the grant agreement is for. They guarantee us, we need to meet certain requirements in order to be able to qualify for that grant, but we don't want to proceed with that work until we know they're going to pay us, because if not, we could potentially be out $532,000 as opposed to $106,000. So we've been working to get that grant agreement executed for about a year and a half, two years. We just haven't been able to get it executed yet.
Okay, so regardless of our decision today, then, we would not be proceeding with this unless we were sure that the money was coming in?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think I misread. So the entire cost is $532,000 just for the study?
It's for the study as well as some additional enforcement activities along that corridor and the interim, and that's really the basic, and I'm sorry, and quite a bit of outreach as well, because there is some public outreach in this.
That's half a million dollars just for studying this corridor?
That is correct.
I think the original Bolinger study didn't even cost that much.
I think the first one was a conceptual plan, and now we're moving into data gathering. We're doing some outreach with respect to that project, which usually costs quite a bit of money, and there is also some additional enforcement from the sheriff's office. This is a two-year project.
Why do we need additional enforcement?
Well, you're going to go a little too deep in my knowledge right now, but, you know, there have been complaints that people speed down that corridor, and that's what's making it unsafe, so the additional enforcement would help to...
But if we do additional enforcement, wouldn't the data we collect be inaccurate? Because we wouldn't be able to do the additional enforcement going forward.
I mean, we could do the data before, you know, before we do the additional enforcement. I mean, you're getting into some details that I don't have all the answers for right now. Just trying to provide information on the project by itself.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Call a question?
So I, is there any, so is there any way that I don't want to lose the grant funding? So in case we take a different direction, could the grant funding be used for other projects?
No, this is strictly for this corridor.
And if we do other study, it cannot be used for?
It's, again, strictly for Bolinger Road, for traffic analysis, additional enforcement, outreach. I believe there's a micro-SEM that's being done for this corridor. It's strictly for Bolinger Road.
So at the end, would we have a complete design? We won't even have a complete design? We won't have any design?
Correct. We will have additional data that will inform a decision on what type of improvements we would want to proceed with on that, and then we would have to go and get design.
So half a million dollars of study that doesn't even, that doesn't only has, would have some recommendation?
I mean, keep in mind, this is like a two, two-and-a-half-mile stretch of road. It's not just a block. We're talking about a very large segment of an arterial.
Okay, okay. So, and do we, anyone would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defund this project.
Moore, second.
Would you have other amendment?
Well, I do hope that we look at having a comprehensive traffic study done for the city. I have pulled up the transportation portion of the EIR from 2014, and all we have in our environmental assessment is a statement that we would have significant and unavoidable impacts even with mitigation for the housing element that we just approved. And I'm wondering if Placeworks has some of that traffic information, because they were on track to provide us with the transportation section of an actual EIR. So someone probably was subcontracted to do that work, so I'd like to know if that information is available somewhere. I think that could be informative for some of the other decisions that we have, because I'm, such as Stevens Creek Boulevard, making improvements there. So with that, I don't have any kind of amendment for this, and I think at this point, we need to defund it and look at having a comprehensive traffic study. Because otherwise, we're simply like picking streets out without having the backup data to know why we should be providing this much improvement to this particular area. Homestead is a particularly dangerous route as well. And with regards to having protected bike lanes on Bolinger, as we saw from the data information about the fatalities, it was two pedestrian fatalities. One was jaywalking near the Rancho Rinconada Recreation Center in, I think it was Twilight, perhaps. And then the other fatality, another pedestrian fatality, happened at the intersection of Miller and Bolinger. And that, we do have issues with people running red lights, and it may be that we... And it may be that we, if we research what happened with that accident, that a red light monitor might be something that we need to have. I know we used to have them at Stevens Creek and Deansah and at Wolf and Stevens Creek Boulevard, but from some lawsuit, we had to remove those features. But we're seeing this happening all the time now, people running these red lights. So I think some other studies are warranted.
Okay. Councilmember Mohan?
I just wanted to make a comment on what the vice mayor said. It would be nice to have a comprehensive study of all the streets and all the safety features or the non-safety elements of all the streets, but I, I'm not sure that's practical. This Bollinger Road corridor is one of the most highly trafficked roads in our city. And just from a practical viewpoint, we have to do it street by street. I'm not sure just a holistic, all comprehensive study of all the streets of Cupertino is, is ever going to materialize. And here we have a specific study for the Bollinger Road corridor. We have funding or we are likely to get funding. If we don't, we don't proceed. I don't see any downside in approving this project. All that we're doing is doing a study, which we will use for implementation of whatever we need to do based on the results of the study. So I'm sort of, I'm not convinced that there's any downside to not approving this. We have the money or we are likely to get the money. This is a, a major traffic corridor of the city. And there have been incidents and accidents and our goal is to prevent even one fatality. So I, I would not recommend defunding it.
Okay. So I, I feel torn because I really appreciate staff for getting this significant grant on this project, even though I'm, I don't understand why we need half a million dollars spent on this study when, if we had accepted alternative B from the initial feasibility study to use the existing land configuration, then maybe the staff would have been moving in the direction of getting grant to get a design for the, for safety improvement in intercept, in, for the Bollinger intersections. I think it's common sense that we need to improve those intersections. So I, but then I think we do need to start moving the right direction. So I hope the staff can work with MTC, maybe see if we can get the federal grant redirected maybe to Homestead. I think the county is looking to improve that. I think that's even more troublesome corridor in the Homestead. That's probably has more, even more usages than Bollinger. Yeah. Okay. Let's vote.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Just for clarification, I vote is to defund, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the motion is to defund the Bollinger Road corridor study.
Right. Just want to make sure. Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Fruin recused and Mohan voting no. Mayor Shelley, call in.
Bring council member. Anyone would like to share your thoughts on the remaining items? Or maybe a motion, if you have a motion or...
I would be happy to propose a motion to defund the other projects that are on the list. So the Photovoltaic, the remaining bike lane projects and the list here.
Just a simple refund, I mean, simple defund for, for the other five items?
I'm, I am not seconding that. I'm not hearing anyone else, any other seconders. Out of the remaining projects, the only one I would consider would be item six, the SV Hopper EV parking. And the reason there being that I would like to see if there's some alternatives to either that location or the city, since the city of Santa Clara has better electricity rates if we're going to be charging all these vehicles. I'd like to see if they could help us out, especially since they're going to be expanding to the north, what their coverage area is like. And then with regards to the bicycle projects kind of in general, I would like to see the Tammy and Inu Trail, that's the I-280 trail, moving forward because that one is very protected. So for people who are concerned about their east-west route, that's, that will really take care of a lot of issues. I understand there's some very expensive other things that we would like to fund as well, so I don't know when we can get to that. I hope that our large employer considers helping us out with this particular project since it would really benefit employees that are going along that route. So I can make a motion that we would defund item six, the Silicon Valley Hopper EV parking, subject to identifying some alternative locations.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, it sounds like you want to break them down separately, put them down the line separately?
I am not interested in defunding any of the remaining ones beyond this particular one.
Even the Photovoltaic one with seven million sitting there?
Correct.
That could be reused for City Hall?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Mohan?
Is there a motion to not defund the, the bikeways, the three bikeway projects and...
There is no motion to defund.
There's no motion in general?
No motion to defund. No motion to not defund.
All right. So I'll, I'll, I'll join Vice Mayor Moore on the Silicon Valley Hopper EV parking.
There is only one motion. Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're, you're second that?
Are you going to make the motion, Vice Mayor Moore?
I move that we remove item six, Silicon Valley Hopper EV parking, that particular project, with the provision that staff will look for alternative locations.
I'll second that then.
Could I make a friendly amendment for, for number six, the EV park, Silicon Valley Hopper EV parking? Can we discuss this before voting yes or no on, on that particular item?
Discuss what?
The Silicon Valley Hopper EV parking.
We are discussing now.
What's the friendly amendment? What's the friendly amendment?
The friendly amendment is to take that out. We are, the motion is to not defund the...
The motion is to defund the EV Hopper parking.
Okay. All right. I will leave it at that.
If you want to discuss, now is the time to discuss.
Okay.
Do you have some comments to make?
On, on that particular? Yes, yes, I do.
Yeah, you can make that now.
Director Mosley, or maybe Susan, right now, the information I'm, I'm hearing is that the, the vehicles are being parked at, in the Deansah parking lot?
That is correct.
And is that a temporary arrangement or could that go forever?
We have an agreement with them. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the term of that is, but they have been kind enough to host those vehicles at the moment. We are currently also working with the city of Santa Clara to see if there's parking within some of their existing EV facilities. I think as Susan had mentioned earlier, they are working with their utility, electric utility district to try and make that happen. So we are looking for other options right now.
So you are looking for other options. One of the options stated in your staff report is, is this parking space outside the gates of the sports center, sort of facing Stelling?
That is correct. The original intent of this project was if we could not secure EV charging parking someplace, that we could go and construct our own. We have been lucky, David Stillman, our transportation manager, has been working diligently with Deansah to set up an agreement with them so that we can use their facilities. But we're, but we are also looking for something a little more permanent. And since the city of Santa Clara is a partner in the Hopper, we feel that an agreement with them to utilize their EV charging would be something more long-term. As it is, Deansah has the ability to basically kick us out on 30 days' notice.
So then what would be our option if they did exactly that?
Right now, we would, like I said, we're working with the city of Santa Clara. Our secondary option would be to proceed with constructing EV charging someplace within the city that, that, that we would have control over.
Can you identify one or two of those?
Well, the one location we're looking at right now is outside the gate of the sports center. I'm not sure of any other locations that would be ideal for, for the Hopper. You know, we would have to look a little further to see what other locations may work.
Okay. So my comment would be to encourage the staff to continue to look for other options, preferably in the city of Cupertino, because we, this is our project. The SV Hopper is where, this is where it all started and there would be a certain, what do we, city pride in having these vehicles park in our city as opposed to Santa Clara. So I, I would encourage that.
Yeah. But I think it seems agreement with Deansah is a pretty good option. Thank you for working out that agreement. And, but then we, if we are going to have solar panel in sports center and those will still be providing EV charger with, whether it's dedicated to SV Hopper or not, would they still be providing the charging facility there?
Mayor, the PV project does require the addition of, I think, one EV parking space by building code. The, to do the EV parking for the Silicon Valley Hopper fleet is a separate project. It would, we'd need to add 13 to 15 charging stations for that fleet.
Oh, so right now the solar panel does not come with EV charger?
No.
Okay. Because I...
It comes with some that are related to the project and the code requirements, but not to charge the fleet.
Okay. Because I, I talked with someone who, who runs a company who does solar panel installation. They said that a lot of times they can provide EV charger complimentary for their customer as part of the deal. So...
The plan is to stick to the code requirements and I believe it's something like 5% difference. So it depends location to location, but it won't be, we won't be maximizing our EV chargers. It does, that has an impact on parking, which we do not want to do at the sports center.
Uh huh. Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, so you're looking for design and construction? I was just kind of wondering for this 321,000, wait, I'm looking at the wrong thing. No, that's correct. For the 321,000, how much is the construction expected to cost? That's not within this.
I believe that does cover construction as long as we don't have to get into major electrical connection upgrades. And if that's the case, it could jump up or upwards of 550, 600,000 dollars. When this original request, which I think was put in two years ago, we weren't sure what was necessary, so we put in what we thought was going to be enough. We had an investigation done by an engineering firm and they said, if you don't have to get a new, a brand-new connection, you could, should be able to do it for 320. We're pretty sure, we're kind of on the edge. If we wanted to do level three chargers, we definitely need to upgrade the service connection from PG&E. But the original intent was this is the Hopper, they're going to do a slow charge overnight. And we thought that level two would be adequate and it should be enough to get a level two charger system there. Susan's going to look at me and say, probably not.
And we have chargers going in along Mary near the, near the yard. Is that correct?
There's a separate project to increase the infrastructure at the service center to allow for electric vehicles within our fleet and that would be in the service yard.
Within the yard?
Not on Mary.
Okay. And that would not be something that would include Silicon Valley Hopper? That would be as you're getting, going all-electric. Okay.
Okay. So should we vote on this motion?
Mayor, may I ask?
I was going to...
Yeah.
I have a question, but it looks like Councilmember Wong has, has had it.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, in, in general, I actually don't support any solar project that doesn't have battery storage. I, I think it's actually, you want to do both of them at the same time and we want to reduce our dependency on PG&E. And so, you know, ideally, if we were to look at a comprehensive energy strategy, you know, we would, we'd think about where we would actually build battery storage capabilities by putting things like mega packs in so that we could actually have the ability to eventually get to a point where we're generating our own electricity through all those storage capabilities, which would drive down the cost. That's just my comment. Happy to go to vote.
Okay. Thank you. So does any of our current SPV system have the battery capability?
Thank you for the question. The PV project, by the nature of the NIM2 interconnection applications, we're required to stick to the solar panels. That doesn't mean that in the future, we couldn't add a battery backup.
So we could add them later?
Yes. But in the, at the initial onset of the project, in order to gain the NIM2 benefits, we have to stick to that application.
Okay.
And Mayor, may I just clarify the motion? So I have it, the motion's to remove the Silicon Valley Hopper EV parking, subject to identifying alternative locations and is to remove synonymous with the equivalent of defunding?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's vote.
Councilmember Fruin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So the next one, I would like the council to consider, I know we have done this, we all want safety for Cupertino. And for me, the priority of safety has been that's make more of the bike paths safer at a cheaper cost. As I have seen in San Jose and Santa Clara, they had a lot of separated bike paths with bollards. And I learned through the Stevens Creek Boulevard Bike Way, 2.2 million dollars. If we, if we use bollards, it's only about 70,000 dollars. So a lot of the higher cost is not even for concrete. The higher cost of this cost, of this project is a signaling change of the intersection. And that's what has been gotten a lot of complaint in, in the Wolf Road. And we would be duplicating the Wolf Road intersection, which, not sure how much safety benefit is there. But if we spend a lot more money on intersection, that means we can, we are slowing down making Stelling safer. If, if we had defunded us, so we don't spend too much on one project, we could then move up the schedule for Tammy and Trail. up the schedule for 10-minute trail. We can, we can spend, make other, I think someone has said we need more vertical corridor to be safer, the Stelling and Blenny. So if we, if our priority should be on spending, making more miles of bike paths safer, rather than spending a lot on intersections. So that's what I'm hoping to, for the council to still consider, not exactly defunding, but re-prioritize the funding we have on the, on the Stevens Creek. So we prioritize less on the intersection, but focus on bike path safety. So would our council member consider that?
Mayor, are you saying that you would keep the capital improvement project, but change the focus of the project description?
Yeah, reduce the funding, so we.
To not completely eliminate, but focus that funding on the bike safety aspect, but not on reducing the traffic signals?
Yeah, less on the, yeah, I think this project will add a signal phase change that will affect the vehicle traffic, it will affect the right turn. So those changes I would like to not consider that, but I think we can consider, for example, green pavement for bike paths through the intersection, which make it very visible this is bike path. So those kinds of improvement, improvement, we should prioritize.
I do want to provide some clarity that the current grant funding is for the project that we have under contract, which includes the intersection improvements, as well as the, the concrete facilities. So any changes would probably result in the loss of the OBAG funding, which is $807,000. SB1 funds could potentially be reallocated, though.
May I ask a question of Director Mosley?
Oh.
Director Mosley, are we, are we, are we adding no right turn lanes on the south side of Stevens Creek Boulevard and DeAnza?
We are, this is a complicated thing, and we've, we kind of discussed this previously. Currently, people are able to utilize the bike lanes to make a right turn onto South DeAnza. With this project, those bike lanes would be restricted from cars, so they would be stuck using the vehicle lanes. So I guess that's the technicality. From a practical standpoint, that, that bike lane that people use as right turns would not be accessible by cars.
And will you be blocking them just the same way as we do on the northbound? Why, nobody can make that right turn?
Correct. The northbound, again, is a bike lane if you've, if you've gone, I shouldn't say northbound. Are you saying northbound on DeAnza or westbound on Stevens Creek?
Westbound on Stevens Creek, heading north on DeAnza, correct.
Correct, that's a bike lane. It's, and you'll notice as you're going westbound, it's a little, it's, it's a lot more narrow than the, the one on the eastbound side. That is a bike lane, but yes, that too would be blocked from cars.
And are we going to be doing the same thing on, so what happened on Wolf is the same thing that will happen on DeAnza, is correct?
Yeah, basically the same thing, correct. You know, we originally did Wolf, and we learned from our original design there, we did go in and make some modifications. We do believe the modifications are working well now. I'm sure everybody has an opinion on that, but it would be very similar to what we have at Wolf Road and Stevens Creek right now.
I believe people are avoiding it, that's why you're seeing less traffic. So that could be why your data is a little bit different.
That's perfect for my commute, because I use it every day.
That, that is an opinion, and I'll agree with you on that. I, I would love to garner some support to not have that happen, and, and I think one of the things that, you know, I believe that by supporting this, well, if there's no way we can actually take those, bring those right turns back, or be able to use that right turn lane, that's really the cause of all the consternation. In fact, that's the cause of some of the road rage that you're seeing on Stevens Creek when people are frustrated that they can't move, along with the fact that traffic patterns are changing. And so this is part of the larger challenge, where we have a flawed active transportation plan and a flawed Vision Zero plan that was heavily configured for bikers and not accounting for the majority use case, which is on cars. And if we don't defund this right now, we're going to continue the mistake that we made several years back, especially given the sentiment has changed. We were mostly elected because of this issue, and I would say a good number of residents felt the same way, that we need a good balance between bike safety, pedestrian safety, and vehicular safety. We over-indexed for bikers, and it's reflected with the loss of being able to make a right turn where we need to, especially on commutes. So I, I hope to garner some support for this as well, along with the, the mayor, and if we can't make the changes, I'm hoping we could actually do some of the safety improvements in a different way, but taking away that right turn lane is very, I mean, we already saw the anger that came from taking away the lane on DeAnza, and this is only going to continue to fester. So that's just my opinion.
Since this is an intersection, we should have done a very detailed traffic study before making any change. So are you making a motion?
I would like to make the motion to add Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 Bike Way Phase 2A and Phase 2B on the list to be defunded.
Or is it just a reduction in funding, so we still?
We can't change it, Mayor. I think we can't change it.
So we cannot change it?
Otherwise, I would love to change it.
So is it possible we just defund a portion of it? Can we just defund the intersection portion?
I think with, I mean, now we're designing on the dais, so I would recommend just defunding and let us start from scratch, because basically defunding the intersection would result in the loss of, of grant funding, which means we're back to going to the very beginning. So I'd recommend defunding the project or proceeding with it as it is. I mean, we, we already have the project designed, under contract, we're proceeding. It's better to just not stop it and redesign it at this point in time. I would say it's on or off.
Mayor, if I?
Director Mosley, is there any? Oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to, I was just going to add to that, like, we probably need to take action as it is written, and then the next item is obviously the proposed budget, so we can also have this conversation about something else in there.
So any other council member has commented?
I had a question for Director Mosley. There's, there's, there's no way to ask MTC or ask the other grant powers for that, that change, or is that just too hard?
It's not that we couldn't ask. They would take away the existing funding, and then we would have to ask again. Keep in mind, we had requested this funding, and the only reason we got it was because another city had, I think, either defaulted or not able to come through on their grant obligations. So MTC had some additional funds, and they're like, and we applied for them and got over this project. So most likely, these funds would go away, and maybe somebody else would grab them, but it's, we could attempt to go again. Part of my concern there is if we, you know, leave these grant funds on the table because we're defunding a project, I think we're going to be less likely to have them provide funding for future projects. That's my opinion, I, you know, everything, everybody's got their own opinion there, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fruin.
The purpose of these improvements is to enhance safety. To the extent that we de-conflict cyclists from motorists, we accomplish that. That is precisely what the project as proposed does. If we allow motorists to once again invade the bicycle lane, then that means that we are promoting that conflict. So I would see changing this project in any way as fundamentally at odds with Vision Zero and the concept of reducing deaths on these highways. I also just think that it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to throw away a whole bunch of money and then make it difficult for us to go and get it again. That, that just seems completely schizophrenic. I would also caution everyone against over-reading exactly what the election meant. I don't think anybody elected anyone on the basis of this one specific issue, and I certainly don't think that there is a majoritarian mandate to undo bike infrastructure in the city. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Thank you, Councilmember Fruin, for those remarks, and I do think that we need to really take caution in having an agreement with our contractor, which we formed earlier this year, and progressing on these projects. I looked at the original 2016 application for the grant funding from our civil engineer, Dave Stillman. It was identified as the number one bicycle project in the bike ped plan, completely understandable. And it isn't just our city council that we have right here, which has weighed in on this project. This project has been in the works since 2016. Multiple city councils every two years have had an opportunity to weigh in on this particular project, along with the, the Vision Zero plan, and our policy is to get to the Vision Zero. So I am in favor of this project. It is in keeping with many years of decision-making and policymaking by our city council. Thank you.
Okay, so just for that, the many years, I think, in the 2016 bike path plan, this was, Stevens Creek Boulevard was ranked number one, but then the intersections, in the intersection Stevens Creek with Wolf and all, or DeAnza, they are ranked much lower, they are not ranked together. So the bike path alone, no question, is number one. So whenever this was on the council agenda, my understanding was, this is a bike path. I didn't know it's an intersection. I only learned it's an intersection, not from the staff report, from my question to the staff report, and why it would cost this much. Then I learned this project actually include very expensive upgrade to the intersection. So I hope going forward, we are clear on the scope of the project. If it's bike path plus intersection, make that clear. And so therefore, I don't know what the prior council has voted for, because I, this is my seventh year, and I only learned that this project includes this very expensive signal change in the right turn, through questioning, based on the cost, that I didn't understand why it would be that expensive, so. But I also feel very hard to turn back on this, it's already designed, already contracted. So I, yeah, I'm leaning towards not defunding that, and just, I hope going forward, we, the council will be consulted before we move forward with the grant application, so that we are aligned in our vision. Yeah, okay, so.
I have one quick comment.
Yeah.
So there is a belief that the drivers don't have any say in the city, and the drivers are also not bikers or pedestrians, and I think that is a fallacy that's being played here. The average person really needs to get from point A to point B very efficiently on our thoroughfares, and when we take away right turn lanes, that is a huge issue. For all those people listening to this meeting today, that are drivers, that do not feel this, that feel the same way, that we should not be taking away our right turn lanes that were given to us, that have been encroached by bikers, I really encourage you to write to the city, because if you, because you've been quiet, you've been silent, you have not had those votes said, we've walked the doors, and I think a lot of people would agree that we want the bike path, but we also need to be able to get moving through our thoroughfares, especially on commutes. And I would encourage people to write in and encourage people to continue to support this, otherwise your voices will not be heard, so.
Okay, so I don't think we have a motion, right?
There was no second to Councilmember Wong's motion, Mayor.
Okay, so any other comment on the item? Then we can move, close this item, go to the next one.
May we take a bio break?
Yeah, okay, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, now, let's get to the last item of the evening, the initial study session on fiscal year 2025-26 proposed budget, and fiscal year 2025-26 capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our initial study session on the proposed budget for fiscal year 25-26, and we have had prep sessions with, with most of you, so thank you for taking part of your Friday last week to, to go over that with staff and ask some great questions. You'll notice we've, you know, addressed some of your questions already, and some of the updates you will notice is included already in the presentation for tonight. And attached with this agenda item is, of course, the proposed budget, the CIP, and the community funding recommendations from Parks and Rec Commission. And with that, I will turn it over to Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services and team, to take it from there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am pleased to present the fiscal year 2025-26 proposed budget. With me this evening is Tony Owase Anderson, Acting Budget Manager. This budget is the culmination of work that began in October 2024. It also marks a return to a more balanced forecast after two years of significant budget reductions and the settlement of the CDTFA audit. For the first time in two years, you will see more requests for funding from departments, including requests for additional staffing. As you will hear later in the presentation, staff took a thoughtful approach to funding requests, ensuring minimal impact to the 10-year financial forecast. Before I begin, I want to start by thanking the city council for their feedback and guidance. I also want to thank city staff across all departments, who have been instrumental in ensuring the completion of this document. This year's budget has been challenging in different ways than in the past two years, as we've had some vacancies in key positions, but I am grateful for the hard work of everyone and their perseverance through this year. Before we jump into the numbers of the budget, I want to just sit, take a moment and describe our study session objectives for this evening. The budget is a planning tool, and the department directors and I closely go over the details of the budget up to the transaction level. Tonight, we will go over the budget document at a high level, we will focus on big-picture impacts. The budget document has been available to city council and the public since May 1st, and last Friday, as Acting City Manager Tina Kapoor mentioned, city staff had studies, had budget study sessions with the majority of council members to go over the proposed budget. Lastly, there is a supplemental report for this item as well, to address issues and questions that arose from that study session, along to answer, in addition to answer any questions that came after that study session. This evening is an opportunity for our council and the public to give feedback and ask questions, and this is really the heart of the presentation. As the name implies, this is the budget being proposed to city council and residents. This evening, the focus is on fine-tuning the budget into what will be the final adopted budget. Our goal is to receive feedback from the council and residents on the budget, and to take all the information received and any questions we may not be able to answer tonight, and bring those updates back as part of the final budget hearing and adoption scheduled for June 3rd. Every year, when we're putting together a budget, I should say, the last few years, really had a need to put together some major themes that were happening around the budget. And as we start to put the budget together, these themes emerge. Some of them stay the same from year to year, others change depending on what's happening in the budget. This year, we continue to see the city build on its strong fiscal foundation, as our reserves remain strong, and our forecasted deficits have decreased. Resilience and adaptation continue from the previous year, as we continue to evolve in our new normal post-major revenue losses. Moving forward is new this year, and begins to lay the groundwork for where we will go in the future, with guidance from the city work program and a request to complete a strategic plan. Lastly, we continue, lastly and continuing from last year, is implementing the plan. We continue to include our budget roadmap that gets us to budget adoption and sets forth a plan that includes monthly, sometimes monthly. forth a plan that includes monthly, sometimes monthly, bi-monthly check-ins to city council on budget-related items. All of these touchpoints have led to the document we are discussing this evening. And speaking of the roadmap, oh, you know what is, I just realized, Tony, your presentation is not playing on the screen. Sorry. I just kept looking over at her screen and didn't, so I think if you do function F8... Someone should have stopped me. If not, a video can assist me. I think you assisted me last time to get it. Maybe unplug and plug back in. It's this one, right?
I do have the presentation queued up on my.
All right, give us a second. We can give it one more shot. Success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. The budget roadmap. As you can see, we're almost near our goal, with all of the boxes proceeding being shaded out. Those are all the recordings or touchpoints that have already occurred. The box with the red border around is where we are this evening, at the proposed budget hearing for the budget and the CIP. Nearing the yellow box is our next council meeting, where we'll wrap up fiscal year 24-25 reporting. And then, as I mentioned before, moving toward a June 3rd adoption of the budget. I promise we'll get to numbers in just a moment here, but we do want to call out that another item that happened this year, which is really a welcome addition for us as we work to continuously improve our processes, is the Budget IAP, or Budget Implementation Action Plan. We're pleased to share that we have implemented 17 of the 33 recommendations to date. Some notable items include the adoption of the council special project policy, the printing of the 24-25 budget at a glance, and the addition of 20-year charts in the forecast section that include 10 years of historical actuals and 10 years of forecasted numbers. If anyone has seen these charts, we know some of them need some work, and our plan is to make sure they are fully legible with the printing of the final budget document. But we wanted to make sure we got those in there, as we had promised to do so. All of these items were named as a high priority by the council in April, and staff has been able to achieve these in a short span of time. This year, as we thought about what requests we may be making of council for the proposed budget, we asked departments to think of the strategic budget framework when reviewing their requests, to ensure we remain focused on the why of our request. The strategic budget framework focused on three areas. RPI, Restore, Protect, Invest. Restore focuses on bringing back services that were reduced or eliminated in the last two years, like Shakespeare in the Park, community funding, and internal audit contract. Protect focuses on maintaining and enhancing things we already have, like various maintenance projects and equipment purchases. Invest focuses on restoring or investing in new items to help move the city forward. Examples include the strategic plan, new positions, and increased training. There we go. Accessing the budget, we always want to let people know how you can access the budget. It's available on our website. We also have an interactive financial transparency portal, which allows you to see many years of historical data related to the budget. And we also have various save views in that portal as well. And lastly, we wanted to bring the public's attention to our budget learning library. We have a series of short videos that inform you on different topics on the budget. The agenda. So we'll be going over the general fund forecasts. As always, we try to spend a lot of time in the general fund. This is where council has the most discretion, and that's also the largest fund we have in the city. And for those two reasons, the majority of our time and most of our presentations is spent here. We'll also do an all-funds review. This takes a look at the budget holistically, including all funds. And then we'll go over proposed budget requests, cover any issues and challenges, and talk about next steps. We wanted to start off by showing you the budget in its totality. Overall, we're requesting a budget of 135, about $136 million, and estimated revenues of about $135 million, resulting in the use of fund balance of about $843,000. Now, we're going to jump to the forecast, focusing on the general fund before we get into the general fund itself for the current fiscal year. First, we want to cover some of the assumptions made on the major revenue categories. As you can see, for sales tax property and transient occupancy tax, we're using moderate trend lines as growth rates. You'll see we use HCL, which is our consultant that assists us in developing these forecasts. It's their fiscal year 24-25 forecast with a moderate growth rate after that for all three of these categories. I also want to call to your attention to the fact that transient occupancy tax is growing about a full percentage point less than the other twos. Again, I feel like I say this every time I'm up here, but we continue to see just a stalled growth in that area. We're just not seeing the numbers come back like we would like. I also wanted to point out, the forecast continues to have at least one recession built in. It's in '27, '28, and for the recessionary year, it assumes all revenue categories except property tax remain flat. Forecast expenditure assumptions. We have compensation, benefits, materials, contracts, contingencies, and transfers. We have compensation set at two, you know what, this, I don't believe this one got updated. We actually have a 4% vacancy rate included in the budget. We have CalPERS based, CalPERS increasing based on their projected increases provided in our actuarial evaluation, and health contributions increasing based on historical rates. Materials and contracts are increasing by CPI. This is with the exception of the law enforcement contract, which increases by CPI plus two per the terms of that agreement. Contingencies, I wanted to take a moment here. Almost all contingencies, except for the city manager's contingency, have been placed in materials in this year's budget, officially eliminating the contingency line for all other budgets. So I did want to point that out. And then transfers has a negative, and this is primarily due to the, that our debt payment will be completed in 2029, 2030. And this is our updated forecast. The last time you saw this forecast was in early March as part of the mid-year presentation. This forecast takes into account all of the requests, ongoing requests, and one-time requests in this budget before you this evening. Some changes that you will see is the last forecast as part of mid-year had no, okay, the first year was red, and then there were no red bars into the forecast. This updated forecast, you will note, has about a little over a half a million deficit in the first year, and then the last two years have slight deficits as well. I also wanted to take a moment to talk about the footnote on this chart. So one of the charts I showed you just a few slides back said we were going to be using $1.9 million in fund balance in the general fund. But this chart only shows .6. And the difference here is related to the 4% vacancy rate that's included in this forecast. We do not include it in the budget document, because we budget at the position level, and it is difficult to near impossible to know where the vacancies are going to occur, at what time in the year, to be able to budget accurately. So you'll see it included in the forecast, and so that's the discrepancy if someone's looking at both of these numbers. This is the 10-year general fund, fund balance and reserves chart. We have updated it from the one that's in the budget, removing the sales tax repayment reserve, as it does no longer exist. So you can see that our reserves continue to grow in this forecast, because we're minimally using, we only have two years with deficits in the out years, and that's causing that growth. Additionally, this is, you should have a desk item for this item. We realized our math was not mathing, and we updated it to ensure that the totals totaled. So some major changes that we're seeing here that are driving kind of the changes in fund balance, this table shows you our year-end projection for fiscal year 24-25, our proposed fund balance for fiscal year 25-26, and then the projected fund balance in the last year of the forecast. We do have a red line highlighting the reserve for future use. As you can see throughout the forecast, this reserve remains untouched. What we are seeing continue to grow is our restricted category, and that's driven primarily by the interest earnings on the 115 trust, which is invested separately from our other dollars. The other item that you will see will continue to grow is economic uncertainty, and that grows as the budget grows. It's set at two and a half months of expenditures, and so as our budget grows, that number will grow as well. And that's what's causing some of the major shifts. But you'll see overall, we anticipate our fund balance to go from $157.2 million to $178.1 million. Moving on to our general fund overview, and this is where we talked about, we're recommending expenditures of 99.1 and revenues of 97.2, resulting in an estimated use of fund balance of about $1.9 million. We dig a little deeper, and we look at our general fund revenues by category. We see that property tax is increasing by 2.2 million, and this is primarily due to actual growth in fiscal year '25 and updated budget methodology to align budget with prior year actuals. That's to say, we have been under-budgeting this category slightly in the last few years, and we're ensuring that it's closer to where we have ended previous years. The same is true of property tax, which is increasing, sorry, franchise fees, which are increasing by .9 million. Intergovernmental revenues are higher, and this is due to increased funds received from other cities and grant funds for the hopper shuttle. When we look at general fund expenditures, we see that overall expenditures are going at about $9.1 million over last year's adopted budget, or a 10% increase. Contract services is increasing primarily due to the community shuttle, which has offsetting revenue that we just discussed, and the sheriff's contract costs that increased by 6% this year. Capital projects and special projects are about up $1.8 million, and this is primarily driven by an increase in our city work program, up from about half a million last year to $2.28 million this year, in addition to requests from our public works department. Transfers out are increasing due primarily to a transfer, to resuming the capital, the reserve to the capital, the transfer to the capital reserve. Now, when we're looking at the budget across all funds, not just the general fund, again, focusing on revenues, overall, we're seeing revenues are increasing by about 2.9 million or 2.7%. You'll see all the same categories highlighted here, as were highlighted in the general fund, and they're increasing for all the same reasons, so I will not repeat those again. When it comes to expenditures across all funds, and this also includes the general fund, compared to last year's adopted budget, we're up about $5.9 million or 5.7% compared to last year. Contract services is again up primarily for the same reasons we discussed in the general fund. The capital outlays and special projects together, capital, you'll see capital outlays are down here, and this is primarily due to the CIPs or the capital improvement projects that are being recommended. Transfers are out, transfers out are up as well, similarly for the reason we discussed in the general fund portion of this presentation. We also wanted to take an opportunity to further break out contract services, as this was a question that came up in many of our briefing sessions. We thought this was better to do across all funds, and so what we tried to do in this chart is show you prior year's adopted budget for contract services, the current year proposed budget for contract services, and the very last column is a percentage of the total contract budget by department. So the top three departments make up about over 90% of contracts. They include our law enforcement at 60%, public works at 23%, and administrative services at 10%. In the next slide, we tried to break that down a little bit further. So as you can see, in administrative services, the largest portion of our contracts comes from our general liability, property, and other non-health insurance premiums. For, in our finance side of the budget, we also have our sales property and TOT consultant contracts, along with our external audit contract as well. We also have employment practices insurance, executive recruitment, and workers' compensation costs rounding up about $3.1 million in contracts. When it comes to law enforcement, you'll see the law enforcement contract at 18.9 million. The numbers differ from the contract on the other side, as there are some pass-through items that come through that budget as well. For public works, you'll see the biggest portion, biggest contract being the community shuttle, the crossing guard contract, building maintenance at the library, non-point source and street pavement maintenance, bringing that to a little, about $5.5 million overall. This is about $27.5 million, so a large portion of the contracts we saw on the other side. And that ends my portion of the presentation. I will hand it over to Tony, who will take you through the proposed budget request.
Thank you, Director Alfaro. So this slide defines the impacts of one-time costs versus ongoing costs in fiscal year '26 budget and the city's 10-year forecast. Overall, a total of $8.3 million is requested across all funds in budget adjustments this year. This includes $4.4 million in one-time requests and $1.6 million in ongoing requests. Additionally, a total of $2.3 million is recommended for the city's work program. This slide here details the recommended city work program totaling $2.3 million. This slide here shows requests broken out by departments. Please note that the Economic Development Division will be moved back to administration as part of final budget, and the request to fund a part-time analyst in economic development has also been withdrawn. And I'd like to highlight here that as part of a budget reduction strategy, citywide training has been significantly reduced across all budget units as part of budget reductions during the last two fiscal years. Staff is requesting the restoration of 50% of the previously reduced training funds. This was calculated by comparing the training budgets from fiscal year '23 to those in fiscal year '25, determining that difference, and then adding back 50% of that difference to fiscal year '26 proposed budget, which totals $182,253. So next, we will review department requests at a high level. For city council, a total of $87,966 is recommended. This increase is primarily due to requests to restore the internal audit contract, bringing it back to $100,000, which is up from $25,000, which is up $25,000 from $75,000. In addition, there's a one-time request to increase the internal audit contract to fund the fiscal year '26 internal audit work plan that has gone to audit committee and will be before the city council in the first meeting of July. For administration, which includes a city manager, city clerk, and city attorney, there is a total of $192,157 requested. The largest requests are for a new full-time receptionist to provide coverage in the lobby at City Hall, in addition to a part-time communications and marketing coordinator. For law enforcement, the department is requesting $60,000 for ongoing software costs related to the automated license plate readers. For the Innovation and Technology Department, there is a total request of $498,618. Some of the larger requests are for, are $33,500 for an energy management system, $33,600 for logical application, and $225,000. and $225,000 for an adaptive traffic signal expansion. Also highlighting $48,922 to restore conferences and trainings, as mentioned earlier. Moving on to administrative services, there's a total request of $507,293. The largest request includes the request for an additional management analyst to assist with grant reporting and purchasing. There's also a request for $200,000 to fund a strategic plan that was recommended by our internal auditors, as was most recently recommended, as part of the budget format Now, in community development, there's a total request of $410,387. These requests include funding to underfill a housing manager position resulting in a reduced cost for the city, as well as the need for on-call contracts in building to assist with fluctuation in workload and state mandated review deadlines. In the parks and recreation department, there is a total request of $148,353, including restoring funding for Shakespeare in the Park, as well as a new interior gate at the sports center and festival costs. In the public works department, there is a request of $2,078,891 in budget requests. This includes $80,000 for radio replacement project, as well as $103,000 for service center fascia board replacement and painting. Additional public works projects for requests here are $115,000 for vegetation management and $125,236 for a new maintenance worker request in trees and right-of-way. Also highlighting a few other public works projects here, $160,000 for sports center energy management system upgrade, $100,000 for sports center lighting upgrade, and $780,000 in vehicle and replacement funded by existing fund balance in the equipment replacement This table on festival costs lists all organizations requesting festival and fee waivers in fiscal year 26, and organizations receiving festival and fee waivers in fiscal year 25, along with year-to-date costs. In total, for fiscal year 26 is $132,922 in fee waivers being requested. For community funding, there are requests that, on this slide, includes the organizations that received funding last year and are proposed to receive funding this year. An attachment was included with the study session materials feedback and further information from the Parks and Recreation Committee. With that, I'll hand it back over to Director Alfaro.
I wanted to point out, I realize we called that the Parks and Recreation Committee, but I believe they're a commission, and apologies to us, we deal with a committee. So that was our mistake. Wanted to clarify that. We know the proper name. So with that, I'll be wrapping up the presentation here. We want to cover staffing requests, and we always make a point in the budget, even though we are, Tony did discuss them as the department request, to call them out specifically. We're going to break this out into a few categories. The first is new position request. So as you can see here, the three positions we previously discussed, the management analyst and administrative services to assist with grant and purchasing items, a maintenance worker, one, two, and public works in trees and right-of-way. This also takes three part-time positions, eliminates those to create the one full-time position, and the receptionist position to assist in the lobby at city hall. In total, we're requesting $446,893 for those three positions, and these would be ongoing costs. Next, we have part-time requests. As mentioned earlier, the second request on this slide, the management, the part-time management analyst for economic development, that request is being withdrawn, and we'll update when we bring back the final budget presentation. In addition, there is still a request for one communications and marketing coordinator as part of the administration department. We also have new classification requests, and all requests listed on this slide were previously requested in November when we brought the uncommitting of the sales tax repayment reserve. Per council's request, we are showing the current classification, the current salary and benefits, the proposed classification, proposed salary and benefits, and the difference. And for those of you that were in the study session, we were missing the parentheses around the 105, and we have corrected it here. In total, the reclassification requests are actually resulting in decreased cost to the city of almost $20,000, and that's primarily driven by the underfilling of the housing manager, which results in significant salary savings. Next, we also want to talk about potential changes since the proposed budget. I normally give departments a deadline of about April 15th. If you don't have your adjustment you need in by then, I try to cut them off because we need to print by May 1st. And as you can imagine, printing a 500-page document, which is actually 140 pages less than our adopted budget last year, is quite a momentous task. This year, I'm happy to say that thus far, the only major changes we have happening are in the general fund, and we've mentioned it a few times throughout this presentation, but it's moving back our economic development division from community development, or CDD, back to administration. The second is also removing a part-time management analyst for economic development from this request. There are several different document edits, some of which came up. Thank you to our council members that let us know some stuff was off in our budget document, so we went ahead and added those items here to make those corrections. If we will continue to look at the document, any other things that need to be corrected, we will correct, but just wanted to lay out the ones that we're already aware of. And so the result of removing that economic development part-time staff, you'll see, is a reduction of $63,733 in total costs, and that would offset that negative fund balance that we're showing. Capital improvement plan, this was brought to council in April, and the three projects that were there at $2 million total remain, which is the storm drain, outfall repairs, ADA improvements, citywide facilities condition assessment implementation. I do want to point out, I know it came up in the prior item, but any addition to the CIP, this would be the meeting you'd want to talk to us about, trying to bring those back for final budget adoption if you wanted to include them for next fiscal year. Issues and challenges, really what we see facing the city is a reduction in revenue, still dealing with our sales tax revenue, but also the loss, potential loss of utility user tax when that tax sunsets in 2030. In addition, we still see, we still have some growing deficits in the last few years of our forecast. I do want to caution to say, a forecast is more, less of a science and more of an art, right? So we're making some assumptions over the long term. I think I've told you at several meetings, if anybody looks at our 10-year forecast or a longer-term forecast, things get really fuzzy in the out-years. You're doing your best to predict what's going to happen 10 years from now, and like, I always like to tell people, did your forecast predict COVID? Because it probably did not, and sometimes those things drop out of the sky, you don't quite know that they're coming. So that's a way to say, we'll continue to watch the forecasts. We have, it looks like we'll have a lot of, a few good years before we get there, and knowing the brains that are at the city, I'm sure we'll crack that nut before we get to those deficits in those years. We've done tremendous work in the last two years that everyone should be proud of. Cutting down over $20 million is a pretty significant task, and I think we did a pretty amazing job at it. We, the, all of us in this room, all the folks behind me, and anyone listening at home. Next steps, proposed budget study session, that's where we're at today. We'll be back on June 3rd for the final budget hearing and adoption, and then we'll be back in November 2025 to let you know how we ended the prior fiscal year, give you an update on fund balance, and potentially make some more requests, because a budget is our best guess, and sometimes we need to make adjustments. With that, I'll open it up for any questions anyone might have. Aside from Tony and myself here, we also have our department directors available should there be any questions on their request.
Okay, any question from the council, or do we go to public comment first? Should we go to public comment first? Yeah, okay. Let's go to public comment.
And Mayor, I currently see no requests to speak for this item, virtually or in community hall.
Okay, then let's bring it back, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the report, and especially for having the pre-meeting so that we could go over our questions. It was very helpful. So I also appreciate that the budget is a bit lighter this year. It's nice. So I do have a question regarding transfers in and transfers out on the, let me find it, all funds financial schedules page. I thought they were supposed to match, and my table is not matching. So I know last year it matched at $15,612,000. This year, there's a discrepancy. All funds, I've got 14.1 million, and then transfers out, that was transfers in, transfers out, 12.6 million. And I would like to understand why it's different.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, what page is that?
It is page 58. And I'm looking at the far-right column, and I was, so I've had a number of pre-budget meetings, and I wanted to understand where, like, I would find the capital improvement projects within this table. And so I was doing some work on that and learning about it, so would, so transfers in, far-right column, and then looking at transfers out.
That should match. We did have a last-minute change to the budget on transfers, so this is one we'll want to research and come back to, because those numbers should match coming in and out.
Okay, good. That's what I thought. All right. And then, let me look at my list of questions. I don't have too many, but if we were to ask, for instance, so you have the 843,000 difference, that's, and you were going to be taking that, making that match somehow, so where was that money going to be coming from? Just the general fund, or?
So it's within each fund, so maybe if we can, Tony, if we can go to slide, slide And then if we can just have video, put it up on, make it visual, make it a little more helpful. So that 843, what we see is the 1.9 million would come from fund balance in the general fund. For the 3.5, the bulk of that is housing fund, so special revenue funds are restricted. We could not retool those dollars. So we show it as a total, but you really should be looking at it fund by fund, and where you see a positive, that means we're going to be, we're expecting to add to that fund balance. Where you see a negative, it means we're expecting to use that fund balance. So to get rid of the 843, you'd have to, you actually couldn't, you could get rid of it to become a positive. You'd have to find ways to close the gap in the negative items. You could do that by fund balance. We could also do that by going back and saying, can you make additional reductions to reduce the use of that fund balance? But those would generally be the two ways that you could do it.
Okay. So we had a number of special projects that have been carried over from prior years. So the expectation with, and thank you for showing the recurring and one-time costs that we have. So the expectation is that if it is a one-time cost, is that that project will be finished in one year? Or can it be carried over?
So it means that the cost only occurs once, and it doesn't get included into the forecast as an ongoing cost. But the cost could take one year to complete, it could take two years to complete. Sometimes it depends even on the purchase of equipment. There is a lot of times I can tell you, I'm like, why hasn't this been purchased yet? And for some big items, they can put the order in in October. And they may not even get what they ordered by the end of the fiscal year. So some of it is timing, when we can get certain items. Some of it is also timing related to, we can potentially bid a contract, get somebody in to complete whatever project we're trying to complete with other agencies, and I'm sure other non-public agencies trying to get items completed. So I know the departments do work diligently to try to get through all the steps they have to get to, to be able to bid something if they need a contract, right? And then being able to bring someone on to finish that. Sorry.
But we could create a policy that says, if anything, a special project, or, or I don't know what to even call this set now, but if it was not complete at the end of the year, it would need to come to council to get re-approved for the following year to put a light on those, that number of projects.
Yes, you could, and some other agencies do have a similar policy.
Interesting. I would be curious to hear about that.
Councilmember Mohan, and then for, I don't know, councilmember Wong, is your hands
Thank you, Director Alfaro, for that great presentation. I had a question on the staffing requests, the full-time staffing requests. Earlier on, in some other context, staff said that it takes about 90 days for a position to be filled. So I was wondering if it would make sense to not annualize the salaries of the full-time positions, but do maybe a nine-month cost, because you wouldn't be using it for 12 months.
The reason we conclude an annualized salary is because we budget all vacant positions at step three with employee plus one health coverage. We do it so we kind of are consistent across the board, but if someone, we were to hire someone that came in fully experienced, that happened to have, need family coverage, right? We'd always, we'd have enough with the savings in the first three months that we didn't hire. So we use that as a buffer, because everything is budgeted at a step three versus budgeting somebody at the highest level, step five, with full family coverage. So we could look to see what might be a more reasonable number that would eliminate that three-month savings, right? But that's the reason why we put it in that way, is it really serves as a buffer. If we get a phenomenal candidate that's fully experienced, ready to go, we want to have that ability to hire at that level.
Okay, I understand that. And then going back to something that was already discussed, I think you said sometimes there's a one-time cost, but it's actually a recurring cost. And I, I'm pointing to a simple thing like the Quinlan Center door upgrade software. It's not a huge amount, I'm just using that as an example. Why is that not one time? You upgrade a door only once, right?
That is an excellent question, and I asked it. There's some software related to this door, and that software cost is over three years. So the full value of the, the cost of the door is 20,000 per year. So we have one-time costs that are, and I'm going to publicly look to Chad to explain this better, because I can already see I'm confusing people, but there is, it's over a three-year period, we need 20,000 each year, and I'm pretty certain it's some software related to how the door functions. And Chad, if I'm wrong, please come up here and correct me. It looks like I may have gotten it correct. But yes, so, but I do want to point out that there are some times where there's, there's a third one-time cost, which is, or reoccurring cost that's limited. So sometimes we have a cost like this that goes for three years, right? But then it will fall off the forecast. So we'll look at the forecast and try to determine, working with the departments. When you say it's an ongoing cost, does it mean all the way through the forecast? When you say it's an ongoing cost, does it mean all the way through the forecast or what's the timeframe? So for that door, which I think we footnoted in the presentation, it's ongoing, but only for three years.
So it would take three years to upgrade the door?
No, I think the door gets upgraded in the first year, but I believe there's a software cost in the other two years for the door.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Frue.
So just wanted to initially to highlight one thing that you had gone over, I think a little quickly on slide thirteen. So we right now sit on the far left of this, this chart. And we've seen a forecast that looks different from this. So I was hoping that you could explain perhaps in greater detail the footnote because I think that it'll clarify some things for folks as to where we sit right now.
So this is currently where we sit right now. There's some major things that happened that we discussed at mid-year that caused the forecast to flip. One was councils approving the use of ten million dollars in one-time funds to make a payment to CalPERS toward our unfunded actuarial liability. CalPERS is our retirement system. This has resulted in savings throughout the forecast. In addition is the water lease, which included a one-time payment over the life of the agreement that could be used for any purpose. And that equated to about one point eight four five million. What we've done is we've annualized that or amortized it over the twelve years of the agreement. But that added an additional one point eight five in revenue. But one of the bigger components, a little over two million in revenue, was the settlement with CDTFA that solidified that we would be able to keep the funds that were in dispute that we had already received. In the prior forecast, because it was uncertain if we would keep those funds or not, we did not show those funds earning interest because we did not want to assume we'd have them for the ten-year forecast. As part of mid-year, having had conclusion to that item, we started to, we fixed the forecast to show interest being earned on those funds. Those were three major components on the revenue side. On the expense side, we already talked about the CalPERS in addition to increasing our vacancy rate from two percent to four percent. All of these tweaks on the expense, sometimes even on the revenue side, is we feel as we get more years under our belt, we feel a little bit better making adjustments that bring us closer to where our actuals had been. But those are the major players that kind of caused us to have a flip. That and the fact that we cut about twenty-four million dollars out of the budget over the last two years as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't point that out.
Got it. I just wanted to underscore that we're in a considerably healthier position even than what necessarily this one blip would show in part because of the way that we also account for the vacancy rate and just the fact that the way that you budget for it is different from what your actuality is. Okay. The other two quick things I wanted to underscore. On slide eighteen, you noted that in the past, property tax had been under-projected and that we've adjusted it. So what in particular was different about the way that we look about at it now versus how we've looked at it in the past?
I think a few things have been happening specific to Cupertino that had us a little bit concerned. One is there had been a slower turnover of properties. And so when a property generally turns over in the city or any other city, you get the new assessed value of the property, which causes an increase to our property tax values. So we had seen a slowdown as the interest rates had started to creep up and we were just being cautious about it. The second item related to property tax that we were trying to watch post-COVID is the telework. And if that was going to have any impact, because we are in the Bay Area and housing is very expensive here and if companies were able to open up that you could live anywhere, that there might be some sort of mass exodus. Neither of those things seem to have happened. We seem to still, even though our, our turnover rate on properties has slowed down a bit, it's staying pretty stable. And so all of those reasons combined made us feel comfortable. I think the other thing I want to point out is that property tax, if you look at our historical ten-year charts, has had some pretty big upswings and there were things that were specific that were causing it. And so we wanted to be careful with our trend lines to ensure we weren't using kind of blips of data that weren't going to occur in the next ten years to help forecast that primarily being the tax equity allocation that brought our sales tax up from, I think from four and a half to six and a half percent. There were also some major developments, Apple campus being one of them that kind of significantly increased property values.
So you're sort of relying on a historical mean as opposed to the random large development that might occur?
Correct. So we were trying to moderate that along with the other items that I mentioned.
Got it. And then just to confirm, we're not basing this on the assumption therefore of any other major developments in the future. It's just the trend line.
No, it's gotten a very, I think in the, we showed it, I think about a two, a little over two percent, maybe closer to three percent growth.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, council member one, do you have any comment questions?
No direct questions. I do want to thank the staff for putting together a much lighter budget. And I think it's really important to add some of those training components in there for staff training and staff development. I thought that was a good piece to see. And I think the projections, as you know, year seven, year eight, year nine, year ten. It's really hard to project those things looking forward. I am worried about the assumptions on transit, on the basically hotel tax, occupancy tax there. I think all numbers show massive decline in terms of business travel. I'm not sure why. But that's what I seem to sense from almost every other city's conversations and looking at other city budgets as well. So that's it. No other questions on my end.
Okay, I do have a question for the city manager. So initially there was, I think, half time, a point six budgeted for the economic development. And then also the creation of the economic development committee was pending on that additional staffing. And now you have a different estimate. Could you explain that?
Sure. Yes, Mayor. So with, with economic development moving back into administration, we'll be able to support the EDC work through our existing staffing in the city manager's office. So we will not require the point five FTE moving forward. Some of the work that this new part-time position being, that was proposed earlier would also have been, you know, some of it would be for the city work program. So the expectation is with the economic development coming into the administration and given our current staffing levels, we will be able to support that work.
Yeah, but then, but then there is additional reception that will be also helping with.
Yes, so thank you for asking and I, and thank you for bringing that up on, at the prep session as well. So as you noticed in administration, which is city manager's office, we're adding or we're requesting a receptionist position. So currently the city hall front desk reception is being covered by, you know, different staff within the city manager's office, which is higher classification than a receptionist. So if we add that receptionist position and that gets approved, we're able to bring the higher classification staff member back into the team. And through that structure, we're able to support any resources that would be required for the EDC and other work.
Okay, so it will be a cost saving, saving because it's a lower pay for the receptionists to cover that type of work.
Well, the receptionist is a full-time position, which is, you know, but it is the lowest classification we have in, within the city to cover the front desk.
Yeah, and, and I think I asked a question about the administrative support for commissions overall. Sorry, I haven't had time to read that info desk item. So what's the current plan?
Yes, so in the desk item, we've tried to provide a little bit of explanation on why there's difference between different commission support. My initial, you know, kind of looking into this matter, what I've, what I've gathered is that different commissions have different functions and roles, their frequency of meetings are different. But we really do need to take a holistic approach and really, you know, understand how these commissions and committees are being supported. We are also doing an info memo shortly, or actually it was published today on hybrid support, right? That council's requested for us to look into. So I'd like to kind of just take a step back and, you know, get a couple of weeks to look into this. Definitely interested in kind of taking a whole picture, look into how we're supporting commissions and committees. And through the addition of hybrid, if that goes forward, we, in the info memo you'll read when you get a chance to look at it, we're suggesting an approach that could actually support all of the commissions and committees.
So if we would like to start supporting hybrid commission meeting, maybe we could do that as part of this budget. Likely we might need technology upgrade to say the social room. Or I think you mentioned an additional staffing that's just support all the hybrid meetings. So that could be part of the proposal if.
Yes, so as long as we get some feedback from you prior to the final budget adoption, we, yeah, that would be.
So maybe it's a good time for the council to give you a feedback about whether this is something we would like. Then you might bring a proposal for the final adoption.
Yes, council can talk about it now and add it now or any time between now and the final budget.
Okay, so maybe the council member can make a comment on whether you would like to see hybrid support for all commission or maybe some of the commission at least. Yeah. Okay, and with that, I think we have the, the chair of Parks and Rec Commission here. She would like to talk about the selection process for the community funding grant program.
Thank you very much Mayor Chow. The five of us got together and looked at the amount of budget that we had to be able to recommend and allocate to provide the guidance to you all. And of the fifteen different organizations, the nonprofit organizations that made the application and were eligible to doing so, six of them were new applicants and the rest of them were returning applicants. So we actually spent a considerable amount of time and provided a prioritization and decided that of the fifteen, we're going to be, we recommend funding twelve. And the three of them that we have, we have decided that of the, for the budget, this was the best way in which we should be allocating the budget overall. So the first, the top five are no time to waste, which is really a surplus food redistribution. We decided to kind of cap each of these at the maximum of five thousand dollars. The second one was elder care. And the first one, why it resonated with all of us so much is that there's so much food wastage within the United States. And this is an organization that actually collects food from groceries, caterers and all the other organizations and actually provides eight hundred plus meals per day, five days a week. Then we have about elder care, another organization which we thought would provide immense value to the citizens of Cupertino, particularly those who are elders, but also others who are actually working towards supporting the elders. So it really encompasses the intergenerational ability for people to take care of each other. Then we have Active Circle, Special Olympics North California, ENARC, which is providing eye care to others. We have about fifteen of them. Top twelve, we spent a considerable amount of time. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone has questions? No? Thank you for the ranking. And then I see that you funded a few new organizations. That's great. Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, council member Mohan.
For the Cupertino Little League.
Yes.
So they had, the current year funding is sixteen thousand.
I don't know if we had Cupertino Little League among those of the fifteen. We had Cupertino Symphony.
Am I looking at something? I'm looking at this. And you've said, it says scoreboard replacement. That's previous year.
That's the last year's.
Right, I understand that. So I'm looking at last, last year's funding was sixteen thousand and this year you're not recommending anything. Is that?
This year we did not have Cupertino Little League. We have Cupertino Symphony, a band which we have three thousand. So what the city staff did is they looked at all the applications and they actually gave us fifteen applications that they said qualified. And I do not believe that Cupertino Little League is part of those fifteen applications that we looked at.
Okay, so I get it. So if it says not applicable, that means you didn't get a request?
We did not get recommendations. So the city staff probably siphoned it off. Maybe it did not fit the criteria because all of those recommend, all of those applications need to meet a set of criteria. And the commission did not receive the Little League as one of the applications.
Oh, you didn't get an application at all?
No, not for consideration. The commissioners did not.
Okay, thank you.
So who, what are these three that didn't get the funding?
So the three that did not get funding is Chinese-American Coalition for Compassionate, Innovate Foundation and Asian American Parents Association. The reason being that we thought that anything that we fund should really encompass the larger communities rather than sub-communities within Cupertino. And Innovate was more about mental health and we already had funded two of the organizations for mental health, including Active Circle and YAR Rehabilitation. And we were also looking at the fact that we had such limited fund. And so we struggled with how to best align with. But I must say that we found unanimity between the five commissioners with all the compromises we were making across the board.
Yeah, I think the city funded that organization before the.
It did.
Compassionate or something.
Right. That's right. We did, actually I was part of that last year when we funded it. But you know, when we have, we also had significantly.
The new ones.
Yes. So we made all those considerations and we were there at least for about, we were debating, discussing for about three, three and a half hours. So there was a lot of thought, discussion and debate. And what was important to all of us was we came with the right mind and heart and we made those compromises listening to each other. So.
Okay, any other questions? Council member Frue.
Just a quick one. For West Valley Community Services, it looks like they had asked for, or at least were granted thirty-seven hundred dollars for a gift of hope in 2024. And the proposed funding this year is two thousand. Is that reflective of what their request was in the application?
You know, we, just as I was saying, Commissioner Frue, sorry, city council member Frue. We were struggling with a limited budget that we had. And West Valley Community Services is also something that no time to waste does very similar work. And we decided that since we were funding to the extent of five thousand dollars, we were actually, there was some discussion between funding West Valley Community Services and the Rotary Club of Cupertino. There was a lot of discussion, should we fund one more and maybe eliminate the other? And then we decided that both of them do such amazing work that with a limited budget, let's actually just, so. I think I pushed for a little bit more funding for the West Valley, if you want to know.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So what does no time to waste does?
So no time to waste actually gathers all the leftover food from groceries, hotels, caterers, and repurposes it into meals. What really captured our attention is it actually has so many legal implications to doing that and the fact that they have figured out a way to minimize, eliminate waste, but actually take the good food and create that. And that resonated deeply with all of us.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad to see the funding for Special Olympics.
Oh, yes. That's another one that was our favorite.
That they, the first time they applied, I think.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
That is absolutely true. And they're actually looking at bowling alleys and a whole bunch of stuff. And it is really very heartening to see.
I attended their event last year. It's really, really fun.
Yes.
So great. Thank you.
This, this chart doesn't show how much they requested, right? Or is there some other?
I do have that information for you and I'm happy to provide that offline also. I do have that information for you, and I'm happy to provide that offline also.
Just, I believe this was an attachment to the item that showed how much each, each organization requested. So you should have it in your packet.
And that has, yeah. Okay, I'll look at it, thank you. Sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So how does everyone feel, one feel about the hybrid meeting support for? So we would like to see a staff proposal on the funding. You get a straw vote on this. So council member one, what do you think?
I'm for the hybrid meetings. I don't think they should take that much time or requirements to happen. I think it's really just.
But you want to see that, you want to see that supported in this budget?
I would love to.
Yeah, okay, council member Freud?
Likewise, I'd be supportive. One of the things, though, that I would specifically ask for is that in thinking back to what motivated not just this city, but a lot of cities to reconsider some of the hybrid meetings, especially for subordinate bodies, was a spate of Zoom bombings, rather racist, anti-Semitic Zoom bombings. And so I think one of the things that would be very good to consider as part of that is how we can control for that sort of situation, and what kind of training we can give the chair especially to deal with those eventualities, because I would really hate to put people in that kind of position.
Would you like me to address that real quick?
Sure.
So in the hybrid info memo that was just published today, we are definitely mindful of your concern, because we've been thinking about that as well. So part of the duties for this position that will support all of the hybrid commissions, one of them will be training specifically to what you're referring to.
Perfect.
For all of the chairs and staff liaisons, just to be aware and be trained in that.
Marvelous, thank you.
Council member Mohan?
Yeah, I'd support it with given, this was something that we had discussed maybe a year ago, when we, when we talked about which, which commissions should go hybrid and so on. There were some sort of protections in place that we discussed at that time, so I'm good with it.
Yeah, so just for clarification, hybrid meeting means including for public to be able to make comment remotely, not just recording. Okay, so Vice Mayor?
I'd definitely support it. I think it helps us reach individuals who aren't able to, because they're taking care of loved ones, they aren't able to come out to the meetings. And like for Audit Committee, for example, we used to have people that would show up and could respond. Now you can only watch it. So it'd be great to have more people interested and able to participate.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's an equity issue that it's, not many people can stick through the entire meeting when they are maybe interested in speaking on one of the items. And also that we, now we don't even have recordings. So when I found, Parks and Rec has some really great presentations updates from the department. And when I found out, interesting presentation, I find out there's no recording I can watch to listen to the presentation. So it would be great if we can start to support this again. Okay, so any other comments, questions, or budget request, or CIP item request that you mentioned, the citywide traffic study?
Oh, I would actually like that, request for that. But I'm going back to the financial overview by fund page. So I just to use my spreadsheet here and did a total, I'm trying to understand, because the transfers in is on the revenue category side, and it's, so 14.1 million transfers out on the expenditure side. The appropriation categories is 12.6 million. If the transfers in is correct, then our deficit becomes more negative. Is that right?
Yes, potentially. So we've identified what the 1.5 is, but we need to go back and see, did we double budget somewhere? Or did we, do we need to increase the expense side? We don't have that answer yet. We're going to figure that out and bring that back in any adjustment that's necessary as part of the final budget item. But we have, we have identified the 1.5, we know what it is. We're just trying to determine, did it get missed on the expense side, or did somehow get double counted on the revenue side? That makes sense?
It does, but it, it makes me very nervous, because it's, it's like, well, if it's more negative, then we're going to really need to, to find some places to reduce costs. So with regards to the vacancy rate, you're using 4%. We just got a report showing like ranging from maybe 9.6 to a little over 10, maybe 11%. So maybe ballpark figure, that could be like 2 million less in expenditures, perhaps even more per year, if you're staying with a vacancy rate that's actually higher. So I would be curious if we could have a little information for council, what historically has the vacancy rate been? Because then it may be that we've been over budgeting staff and, and need to change that. And I, I know that it's, it's actually really difficult to, or I've observed that it's really difficult to tell what the vacancy rate's really like if someone's contracted in, like if you're contracting for code enforcement, that's hard to, hard to be able to figure that out. I did go to OpenGov, and I did see there, you don't have a lot of requests for the city manager's office, but in OpenGov and in the first quarter special projects update, there is a PR and strategic, strategic communication strategy, dollar amount of 127,400. And it says it's in progress. However, I don't have any recollection of council approving this particular special project, and I don't see a date on that. And I'd like to have that, that researched to show us.
I can actually provide you a response right now, if you would like. This came up as part of our third quarter. So at mid-year, this was identified as a project to be defunded. Unfortunately, we did not receive the defund request in sufficient time to put it into mid-year, I mean, to third quarter. So that project will be defunded as part of year end. It will no longer carry over the project. I think they did a little bit of work on the logo, and then that project has been completed. So I don't believe there will be additional expenditures to it.
Okay, so there was work done on the logo?
I believe there was work done on the logo.
Not on the logo, Vice Mayor. This was a project that the, that originally we were going to look at redoing the strategy, but quickly realized that they may, it might actually not move forward. The only work that was done was just a, there was a company called Native Digital that provided some key messaging for the city to use to attract more businesses, and for residents and businesses to kind of feel like a part of Cupertino. We already have that material with us, and we didn't feel like there was any additional work needed at this time, so we're going to defund the rest of it.
Okay, and that, so I did, I have seen that contract. It does cause some concern about adding the part-time staff, because we have a number of things already contracted out. So I'm not, not particularly comfortable about adding, adding more staff when we have had these contracts. And so with regards to the 100,000 engagement with the RISE, I guess this is a work program. What was the intention of that funding? Because they pretty much just do what they want and submit a changed plan and go change the law, and then come back and, and use the new change.
Yeah, and I wasn't as intimately involved in when this project was added to the work program in the past. However, the, Christina can help me answer this question. I don't believe that we have expended a whole lot into the engagement piece of this. The city continues to stay engaged with the, with the RISE team and to understand updates and, you know, push that out to the communities, so the communities also aware.
So, but all of, the cost should be, for, to the city should be passed on to, to the developer.
Some of it is correct.
Yeah, so I don't, personally, I don't agree with having this $100,000 expense, and it doesn't seem like council has any oversight to what's happening with it. So that, that one's an issue. Looking at the festival fee waivers.
Just a minute, so that's last year, the current year's work program. So that means it's, if it's done, and then we haven't spent the money, this dollar will be.
So this, the, the RISE engagement is not an item that's going to be continued on after July, as is, it is part of what was adopted two years ago.
It's not in the new budget anyway.
That's correct. But I would like to confirm what Vice Mayor mentioned, that the pass-through fund, so I will need to confirm that.
Yeah, because that, thank you, because that's what I'm seeing when I go to Open Gov, that some of these, the old city work program items that haven't been completed, the funding is still there for it, and it's waiting for somebody to pick up that project and take care of it. That we would have to actively remove it off of an old list, would that be correct?
If there is still budget for a council work program, it means it's still active, and we would have to defund it. And we'd need to get direction from council to stop work on that, and then defund whatever dollars remain.
Me, even for the RISE engagement, if we don't take action, it remains in the budget?
Correct. Or if it doesn't get carried over. So if the project has been completed, and staff, department staff says we no longer need those funds, then at year end, those are not carried forward.
Oh, but before that take, so it, it will still be in the proposed budget?
It will be in the amended budget, because it's currently in the current fiscal year's budget. So if staff wants to continue that project to move forward, council has not indicated to us as part of third quarter, they want to see that defunded. It would then carry into the next year as part of the amended, as part of the adjustments we present at first quarter.
Okay.
Can, for, for this particular line item in the work program, which is the RISE engagement, if I can get you a little bit more information, that would be helpful. But I can confirm that the 100,000 that's associated with this item, none of that was spent.
Thank you. And through the mayor, we also have a special project showing is $500,000 for, in administration, general fund city manager disaster preparedness. And it says that staff is considering making improvements to the EOC later this fiscal year. And I, I don't know if that is, if that is another item that is still funded.
So that is. If I could just, so it is still funded, but I, although this is great discussion, I think this is better discussion for our third quarter on May 20th, because we do have a listing of all the special projects. So with this item, we didn't include, these would just be new projects, not existing projects. So if someone out in the public is watching, they'd have to know to grab this list from the third quarter staff report that printed on Wednesday night. To just, council can continue with, I think it's a good discussion, I just want to point out, I think it may be better suited for our third quarter discussion.
Okay, and would this be a number that would show up in OpenGov?
Which number, these numbers, yes, these should be in, under the current year budget, and as I mentioned, also an attachment to our third quarter report for May 20th.
Okay, thank you. Because I only went through, in the interest of time, I only went through the Public Works items that showed up in, in OpenGov. And what I noticed is that your, your update, for instance, for special maintenance, your update identifies specifically what the special maintenance is. And when you go to OpenGov, they're all lumped in together, and so you don't really know what those projects are.
It's because that's based on the account, but we have a way to add, I think they call them notations, so we could always add notations to those account strings to say what it is, so there's a little more clarity there as well.
Okay, that, that would help a lot. And there was one item, well, in OpenGov that was showing up, which is low income cost share. I'll ask this one offline. There's, there were a couple that were, I couldn't determine from the, from the brief description what they actually were. So going back to the festival fee waivers, you have a chart, which is a little bit different from what we were given in our, our briefing, and.
I think if a video can project Tony's screen, we have the.
So who determines these festival fee waivers?
Maybe a little clarification, like who determines the dollar amounts or the requests?
Yeah, the, what is the process for, because there is a process for the grants, and the mayor and I worked on it a couple of years ago, and we were getting ready to do the festival fee waivers process, and that subcommittee was dissolved. And so looking at this list, it's like, who made the decision to put these particular projects here? And then I want to understand if I'm getting, understanding the totals correctly? Yeah, so the total amount waived for last year, I would take the purple and the yellow and add those two together. The total waived fees down at the bottom, the 107, or about 108,000, and then 37,000. Would that be correct?
Correct, yes, I believe so.
Those two together, okay. And then for this year, so that's, I don't know, 137, 144. And then this year, we're at 171, that's the total amount. But this does not include other things that are being waived, like within the sister city policy, 18 free uses. And there was no specificity about if those free uses were on popular Friday or Saturday nights at the Quinlan for a party or something, yeah.
So these festival fee waivers, the way they're determined is the festival has to apply, and then city staff works to determine the numbers and bring those forth to council as part of the proposed budget process. So that means that each of these festivals made an application to our Parks and Rec staff to request that their fees be waived. But that has to be approved by council, thus we bring them to council as part of the budget to get that approval. So that little bit about how those, those get on here, and then I just, there was a second question, and it has slipped my mind.
So there is an application on the website, they apply every year. They apply every year for the festival waiver?
There are, I believe there are some reoccurring applicants for festival fee waivers, is that the question?
Do they have to reapply every year?
I believe they do have to reapply every year.
Because the dates change every year, I guess.
Okay, so I had put in a request through the mayor, I had put in a request about just looking at the Sister Cities page separately, and you might actually want to be doing a chamber page as well, because we have these, with Sister Cities, you have the festival costs, which show up here, but it doesn't show up in the Sister Cities under, which is under city council. It doesn't show up there. And then there's also the free use of different, it doesn't specify which conference rooms, or if it's the Quinlan community room. So we don't know what the actual cost is there. And then I would, I am curious what the policy is around those usage, uses, because like I was saying, it could be a Friday or Saturday night, when we could be making more revenue from a paying organization. And I don't know if those, if, if the Quinlan is, if you're able to say, you know, a party is a meeting, so it's the same free use. And so I would like to know what, what the loss is for us giving out all this free use. And then there's other issues, like we have video use, and so we'll be getting this information at some point?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you for, for asking. So there is an extensive amount of information we're gathering into an info memo, and we're, we're going to get that to you before the final budget adoption. With all of this information, if there's anything new that you want us to look into and add, send me an email and we'll make sure to include it. But, but I believe I have captured all of your requests for the sister city expenses and, and things that we are currently allowing within the policy.
So we will be adding these fee waivers into the budget also? So we have complete information in the budget?
Yes, I, that.
I just want to point, there's different processes for different items, so I want to make sure, there is a nonprofit support opportunity page on our city website that if there's. there is a nonprofit support opportunity page on our city website that if there's anyone who's a nonprofit wants to look at support. But I do want to point out, because I remembered what my second point was, was that there were things like sister cities or even like historical society, those are generally governed by a contract. But what I think I'm hearing you say, Vice Mayor, is the contract needs to be clear in terms of like when, if there's like peak hours versus non-peak hours, that maybe those could be rented. And then council would like to see the costs related, not only to this specific specific festival and fee waivers, but any other contracts or agreements that we may have that allow for the use of of rooms anywhere within the city. Is that a good synopsis?
Yes. And then also I asked about the French Friendship Cities. So that what I'm hoping for is that the page is is actually truly reflective. And we were given the cost breakdown a while ago. And it was about what what we were being shown in the table was about double what the sister cities pages showing. And then if you add in the festival costs, it's going to continue to go up. And and we need to be more accurate for the amount of resources that are are being spent. And and that's, you know, not saying one way or the other. We just need to be more transparent about what that cost is versus other organizations who are wanting to be supported by the city.
And so I'm thinking, we have the cop festival costs. But it sounds like we should have a nonprofit support page where we have the actual cost of supporting different nonprofits, including sister friendship cities. I think also include Shakespeare in the Park, because I don't see where in the budget where the budget is funding for Shakespeare in the Park and who approves that. That's not really in, that's kind of in the budget with approval, but not really. Yeah, so so where is the budget is support for Shakespeare in the Park?
That is, I believe, under cultural events, which give me one.
So there is a do we, are there other nonprofits we also support there?
I'm sorry, what was that question one more time?
On the the funding for Shakespeare in the Park or other nonprofit like that, do we have? So the that's, no, I I know that it's in the in the slides. But I mean, do we have a section, a budget where we have all this nonprofit support that we have?
No, there's not a specific section in the budget normally. If there is some some of that support, you would see it in the department write-up under either program overview or service objectives that would identify what this budget funds. But there's not one place where it's all included.
Oh, because I did, I didn't know we actually provided any new funding for Shakespeare in the Park until we caught it. Then I find out, oh, we are doing that. So I don't know then what other nonprofit we actually are funding every year. So is there that information somewhere? It seems that should be more transparent.
It's not with something we can look to put together. I think it sounds like the memo that's coming might have a lot of that information. We can just incorporate that into the budget.
Yeah, and I think our cultural events page that Christina just mentioned, it does list festivals and Shakespeare in the Park.
Yeah, I think we also found like KMTV. So I don't know what other.
KMBT might be a different contract, I don't believe, but we'll all look into that.
Yeah, like the, I think we like the historical society funding that we do have a multi-year contract. But where does that appear in the budget?
We'll look into that, Mayor.
So so those are all the nonprofit support we have. So it's right now, because we signed the contract, then it's not very transparent. So if we can somehow pull those together, be more transparent about who we are providing support, I think that would be better. Okay. Another thing, are we done with this topic?
Through the mayor, there was, there was.
Council member one, okay.
There were a couple of MOUs that were formed with the Rotary for the exhibition of their their rabbits for their fundraiser. And that that would also have some sort of cost associated with it. And I was concerned about whether the city actually has a policy about using the public lands for for a private organization use. And and I was thinking that in terms of there, there may be a number of artists who would have loved to have their sculptural design placed on city property. And we seem to be like missing a policy on this. And on then also, there there would be a cost associated with forming that agreement. And then potentially a cost for for having the use of the public land as well. So that would, that would go into the, you know, what we're waiving for for city use.
What is the Rotary event?
So you remember the rabbits that they made? It was a fundraiser and they made, yes. And they had rabbits displayed on city property. It was done on the MOU. But to me, if you're allowing use of the city property, it should come to the council level at some point where we're.
It's kind of like an event or festival, right? So I suppose they paid the fee rental for that.
Um, no.
Oh, okay. Council member one.
I just want to say in general, when I look at these schedules, I'm hoping that the fee schedules show that residents pay less and non-residents pay more to make sure that we reflect that we're serving our residents. And I think when looking at some of the fee schedules, they don't necessarily always reflect that. And if that's something we can look into.
Yeah, thank you. The fee schedule, we are getting a report, an info memo on the historical fee structure and comparison. I think then maybe we will, we will bring that to the council likely in July. But we would need a 30-day notice for that. So I think we would need the information and maybe the council member can, we would think about, do we want to make any change? And then it will come back. Okay. Then that does not have to go away the budget. That's my understanding. So so it will come. And so the other thing I'd like to bring up is I we had, someone has asked about the Blackberry Farm Swimming Pool opening during the Fourth of July. And I have asked the staff about that. The this, there is staffing, we do need part-time staffing to staff the swimming pool. And then my understanding from Rachel, I don't know if she's still here, is that our summertime part-time staffing is less than before. So in the past, we had more summertime part-time staffing. And using utilizing that, they were able to staff the three events, the morning, Fourth of July and the firework, and then the swimming pool, I think also Creekside Park had some celebration. But we have less summertime part-time staffing now. So this is what we can support now. So I would like to know, do we, why do we have less summertime staff, part-time staffing? Is it because we cut some summertime program?
I will need to check in with Rochelle on that and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I hope to get more information on that.
I can probably cover a piece of that. A part of it is we start hiring for summer hires in February. So we want to get out there ahead of it while the college students are still looking. And since we were kind of late in the game to add the Fourth of July fireworks event, normally that contract would go like in November, December, I think it came back on in February. Just put us a little bit behind in terms of a recruitment schedule. And so was it, we hadn't posted those positions, we didn't know we were going to need them. And so it puts you a little bit behind to try to hire. And when other agencies have already been out there trying to pick up, trying to get their summer hires on, it just makes it a little more difficult. But I think that's one of the reasons likely behind why we don't have enough part-time staff.
My understanding is, I suppose you wouldn't be hiring someone just for one day, for the First of July. So my understanding from Rochelle is they already have part-time staffing for all the summer program. And they were leveraging those part-time staffing to support Fourth of July. But the amount of part-time staffing is lower than it used to be. Therefore, it couldn't support the same level of.
Correct. So I think what happened is the, my understanding, there's an explanation that probably Rochelle can give better. And maybe we'll get back to you with that response that it's more than just Fourth of July. Budget is set about a year in advance. There might have been other changes to other events that also.
Yeah, so I understand it's hard to make that change now, but it'll be good to have an understanding of how the summer part-time staffing has changed and why. Yeah.
Yeah, we can give you that information.
Cut some summer program, I couldn't remember what we did cut last year. And it'll be good to know what we did cut. I think the summer concert is still there. And the movies in the park was still preserved, right?
Yes, so let us get you that.
Maybe less of them? I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, let us get you that that information. It might have been a reworking too of using less part-time staff and utilizing more full-time staff and kind of deploying them a bit differently as well. But we'll get you all of that information so it's more clear.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else has any request? Oh, the traffic study.
Yes, I would like to see funding for for a citywide traffic study. I'm hoping that there was, that Placeworks was on their way to having that since they were scheduled to have the EIR completed in winter of 2024, I believe. And I'm, I still have that concern about the the however much 1.5 million. And is it possible that we can have that information within the next few days about where you find that that happened? Because that makes a difference.
It does make a difference.
Sorry, I lost quite 1.5 million.
The transfers, they should match, but they're off right now. So we'll, we'll look to get you that response before next Wednesday.
Okay. And then if it, if it is a further deficit, then we've got to figure out where that funding's coming from. And I'm just saying that I would have preferred that the 800,000 that we that we matched. And my preference would actually be to see if we can have perhaps some of, because there were a lot of public works items there. I'm looking at either public works or if there are some IT items, since we do have the huge ERP already funded. If if either of those areas, we could come up with the the 800,000 that the budget currently shows. And then hopefully, it's just a, it's just a an artifact of something and there is no extra 1.5 million that we need to look for.
Okay, so I do have two more points. So first, I think I ask the same question every year. The staffing level, I think our staffing peaked at in 2021 at 225. And then I think last year, we said that there were 32 vacancies at the time. And then about 14 were cut. And then, and then there was, I think there was a chart last year. We were projecting to continue to use maybe the retirement to continue to cut down staffing. But it seems right now we are keeping the same level of staffing. So just a question about, so the projection that we have is projecting 2,210 full-time staff, we would be be able to sustain. So we don't have to keep reducing.
That's correct. Based on the current forecast, that assumes the 210, so the 27, 217 plus the three that we're requesting as part of the proposed budget. So in that forecast chart, that just shows the negative in the first year and the two out years.
Yeah.
Those are funded within that.
So even though we are not reducing as we had expected, but going forward, the projection would work out.
Correct. And that's a large part due to the question that council member everyone asked, which what flipped the forecast? So we're bringing in significant additional revenue and then are reducing our expenditures through the CalPERS payment and the vacancy rate.
But I do want to point out, in 2019, our full-time employees, 2,202. So we are more than that, but we do have a lot more work that we do need staffing to do. So yeah, I, yeah, so I just want to bring that up. And then in terms of the traffic studies, since Chad is still here, could you comment on, in case we would like to do a citywide study, would the data from Placework be sufficient? I think you mentioned it's more high level. So maybe you can comment more about if we want to do that, what we might need.
Talk about that tonight. I mean, I'd have to see what kind of information Placeworks has. I'd also probably want to talk with David Stillman about what information we would be able to easily gather. I mean, if you're looking for a full-blown traffic analysis, like we were looking at Bollinger, that would be an extremely expensive study. If we're looking at traffic counts, speed surveys and general information along those lines, we could do that for relatively reasonable costs and then potentially inform that with the Placeworks. I think we could probably do that, but I would need to look into this a little deeper to understand what we could do and what that price would be.
Actually, I have a question for the Vice Mayor. So you did not support the traffic study for Bollinger. And then why do the citywide traffic study? So what do you see that's different?
Okay, so so I made a request for some information regarding the average daily traffic. And I would want it directional for Stevens Creek Boulevard, I was interested in Tantau to Wolf and then Wolf to Deansa, Lawrence Boulevard, Bollinger to Stevens Creek Boulevard and Stevens Creek Boulevard to Homestead, Bollinger, Tantau to Lawrence, Deansa Boulevard from SR 85 to Stevens Creek Boulevard, and then from Stevens Creek Boulevard to the I-280, Saratoga, I'm interested in Doyle to the I-280, Homestead, Deansa to Tantau and Tantau to Lawrence. And it isn't just for, I'm interested in the traffic along Bollinger. I have some old data from your, the old EIR, which traffic patterns might still be similar, but after COVID, who knows? But we're, I would, I'm curious about how Bollinger is doing. I'm curious about how Homestead and Stevens Creek Boulevard are doing. Because looking down the road and then Lawrence in particular, which I, you know, visually I can tell it's heavier traffic than than the rest, is that we're looking at the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study. And I'm seeing that these other routes, these north-south routes are a lot busier than Stevens Creek Boulevard. And I'm, I've made this argument about how we're, we need, we need to have some data before we say, yes, we should be spending all this money here or here. And that's not how you would do kind of a regional plan. You need to have information from other locations. So it's for decision-making.
I think maybe I understand. So for Bollinger study, it was going to focus more on maybe the pedestrian and bicycle traffic. But what you had in mind for citywide is vehicular traffic study, right?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have information on the trends.
The vehicular traffic study that, so we can make decision about the transport, the overall transportation.
Yeah. And so we can look into kind of what data we think would be appropriate and, you know, put together an info memo to kind of give you our thoughts on that. And you can provide input if you don't feel it works. But I think we understand what you want. We just need to look into it, see what that's going to cost and make sure that we're hitting the mark there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else has something?
And also look at average speed as well.
Average speed.
I was gonna say, and also get average speed as well on that as well. Because some some thoroughfares could be increased in speeds and might be lowered in speed depending what you're trying to do.
Oh, okay. Level of service, so we can actually have level of service data. Anyone else has something you would like to learn more before the final adoption?
The mayor, I think there's one for me. I just, I just want to know where we are in the active transportation plan, what's been spent so far. And if there's, you know, where we are on that in terms of overall spending on the ATP, because I thought that was something that that concluded, but apparently it's still being spent.
Uh huh. Okay. So yeah, do we have that data? Or you would, you can get back to us. So Chad would get back to us later.
Mayor?
And yeah, I actually am thinking that right now, we are doing the outreach for ATP. So I would like to bring that to the council to get the data and then have a council direction before the consultant goes and do their thing. Because a lot of times consultant do their thing, then it may or may not even align with what we are thinking of. So so that's what I'm thinking, that we can have a council checking. Yeah, maybe that would be, okay. So Vice Mayor?
This might be a question for staff, but I'm going back to the the continuing work program items that show up in in Open Gov. Is there, how would we agendize the ability to have some of those discontinued if we're no longer interested in them?
So during the work program prioritization process, there is an opportunity for you to say these to not be continued. You can also obviously just direct staff to to not continue them. We can also talk about them at the mid-year check-in. So council can provide direction on any of these to staff.
You are talking about the current and previous year, current year?
Current. And things like where I'm seeing this, this $500,000 allocated.
Yeah, the $500,000, are we talking about the EOC still? So that is, that's grant funding that we have received. So we may be coming to council as part of the conversation with the EOC. And that council's already provided direction on City Hall in that conversation in the fall.
Okay, so that was another, another issue there. So like, I'd like us to be looking at festival fee waiver policy, the grant policy, and then the special projects carryover policy. It sounds like that's something that other cities have. So at the end of the year, that they would, we would have those projects highlighted before they get, before the funding's continued, so that we know that these are still in the, in the works.
Yeah, it would be helpful to get clear direction from council, whether you want us to continue because it was part of the work program at one point, or do you want staff to to stop? In some cases, it's, you know, obviously, if that's something that we bring forward to council as part of this policy, we'll consider. You'll notice some projects, it's probably beneficial to just keep going, and others is easier to stop. So that's a good conversation to have at the end of the year.
I thought when we did the work program prioritization, we also considered the current year work program.
That's correct.
So anything that's not included should be just defunded, right?
It wasn't quite clear if council wants us to.
So maybe it would be helpful that the staff can give us a list. Here are the list. We are not clear. And then maybe that's, we can give direction. Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Great. So we, so we are, so nothing, wow, so we are done in two hours? Yeah. So we are just talking at other cities. St. Jose has a four, four-day budget study session. Sunnyvale has a full, one full-day budget study session, department by department. And we are not really spending a lot of time. So I do wonder, should we have spent more time? Yeah. But we do each have prep session. Yeah. Okay. Oh, we lost one. Okay. So I think we can, yeah, we all adjourn this meeting.